Woodland Cove, before we do anything with Woodland Cove, Wilma has a burning desire to have the floor before we let them go and have a... She has a speech prepared.
All right.
Everything is the guy, the gym guy, the both got...
All right, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Welcome, everyone, to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal meeting for tonight's meeting for June 13, 2018, and it is 6:30 PM at the room 320 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far right, Wilma Engerman, our town planner; Ken Buckland, our clerk, Jim Kabachi; my far left alternate member, Jake Morrison, regular member; Attorney Jen Kendrick; Carl Baptiste, Sr.; myself, the chair, Nazir Al Colasi; and we have our building commissioner here tonight, Dave Pequena. Is, I guess Charlie's not here. All right, we get some preliminary business to do, the meeting for May 9, 2018, and May 23, 2018.
We don't have the minutes for May 23 prepared as yet.
They're not prepared?
No, they're not ready for endorsement.
All right, so we'll continue this for next hearing.
And the minutes for May 9 appear to be in order. We have May 9. We don't have...
Oh, you can do May 9? Okay. Well, I don't review them. Did somebody did?
You want to do it all later?
Next week? Let's do them both next week. Very well.
It's tomorrow night.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Okay. Public hearing will start with 6-18 Kevin Hines, 16 Spectacle Pond Terrace. Want to come forward, please? We have a long agenda, folks, tonight, so we're gonna try to make it as fast and easy as possible.
The zoning board appeals to hold a public hearing on June 13, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 16-18 for a special permit slash variance. Kevin Hines, 16 Spectacle Pond Terrace, East Wareham, Mass., 02538, seeking to construct a new front entry addition to an existing residential dwelling located at 16 Spectacle Pond Terrace, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessor's Map 129, Lot S17, in the R130 zoning district.
Very well, name and address for the record, and let us know what you're doing.
Kevin Hines, 16 Spectacle Pond Terrace, East Wareham, 02538.
Okay.
I'd like to build a proposed seven-foot-by-9.3 entranceway on existing houses to replace an old, open-air entranceway I had, and it didn't meet the setback requirements for the zone of R130.
Okay, very well.
Let's look what we have here. 130, 130 square.
Oh, okay, R130, okay. Oh, that's one of those, okay.
150, 100 feet.
All right, we'll do quick... Okay, just for the record, town consultant, independent consulting, Mr. Charles Rowley is in. Okay, Wilma, you wanna make a comment on this? This is an R130. Supposedly, they changed the bylaws to 100 by 30 by 30, and nobody complies. So what's... Any comment on that?
I'm actually showing this project as being in the R60 zoning district. That's what I referred to in my letter, "Spectacle Pond," so I'm just trying to check to see.
Oh, it's a now of 60.
That's what I show.
Oh. The public notice puts it in an R130, and my knowledge of the zoning says that the R130 is what it's in. Spectacle Pond.
It's on the plan. Who did the plan? J.C.?
J.C., yes.
Where's 16 Spectacle Pond Terrace in the world?
It's the UMass Cranberry Station, off Glen Charlie Road.
I'm not sure if that's R130.
Yeah, it's a 130.
R130.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Wilma, I think it's still to you.
So it is, it is a variance.
It's a variance for the setback, and it could be a variance for the lawfully non-conforming?
It shouldn't... It should not be a variance. It's already non-conforming.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
So he's already non-conforming to the front yard setback. He wants to... He wants to add the front entry, which, which would technically make it... It would increase the non-conforming nature, but it's already non-conforming, so it does qualify for a special permit.
All right. If we decide to, all right.
But what about Article 6, 621, front setback? Isn't that a variance? You've got two reasons for denying them in your letter. Article 6, Table 621, "The proposed entry addition does not conform to the front yard setback requirements for the R60 zoning district."
It already does not conform, so it's a lawfully non-conforming structure.
It's an existing nonconforming, so we could... If it's, if we think it's detrimental, we'll treat it as a variance.
So we can just lump it right in with Article 13, 1335.
Yep. Okay. Ken, you want to say anything?
No.
All right, Jake.
I think it's a little wrong.
Jen?
I don't have any comments.
Carl?
Is this, is this your, this is your existing brick walkway?
Correct.
That's on your property?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
I have nothing.
Nothing. Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor? Against? Okay, here nonetheless. Move to close it.
So moved.
All right, we have a second to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. 500 is closed, so what's the wishes?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
As a special permit?
As a special permit, yeah.
Okay. Being non-detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, carriage. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. Before we move on to the next one, let's get this one signed. It's hot tonight. Someone's here.
Is this AC zone?
Here you go, Nazir. Sign and pass. Does anybody have anything... Can we all pass everything in for the folder? So it doesn't get cross-filed. Do you have anything from Wilma, or is that...
Oh, I got that.
Wilma, okay.
All right.
Pass. Is this, is this your stuff for the folder, from that one?
No.
You can keep the paperclip, but I want that.
I actually...
Thank you. That goes back in this folder. All of that goes back in this folder, right?
It's hot.
Jake's on it?
No, Wilma.
Wilma. Could you get Wilma for me, please? Are you on... Okay. And, Wilma, when you get the... When you get that signed in, would you stuff it in here?
17-18 RM-RM Realty Trust, 3035 Cranberry Highway. Want to come forward, please?
You guys are hot, or I'm just hot? You're hot? Sorry. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 13, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 17-18 for a site plan review slash variance slash appeal from the requirements of Article 7, Section 760, Article 9, Section 910, Article 10, Section 1060, Article 15, Section 1520, of the Wareham zoning bylaws to RM-RM Realty LLC., 3031 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass., 02571, seeking to create a parking lot on a newly vacant parcel located at 3035 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessor's Map 12, Lot LC11, in the CS Commercial Strip zoning district.
All right, name and address for the records.
Tony Stella, 55 Grape Jar Road, Sharon, Massachusetts, 02067.
Excuse me, Jim Peterson, PLS Alpha Survey Group, 695 Wareham Street, Middleborough, Mass., 02346.
And, yep, okay.
Eric Brohmarkle, Water Whiz Water Park, 28 Perry Street, Middleborough, Mass.
Okay, ma'am.
Patricia Kells, RM-RM LLC., owner, 200...
So you're an owner?
Excuse me?
You're an owner as well? You both are the owners?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, very well.
She is your...
She is the owner.
She is your... And RM's... I think I heard the name right, just for the rec... Is that Water Whiz? Is that the property, the project?
Yes, more or less.
More or less, yeah, okay. It's an adjacent... It's... Okay. Just putting everybody in the world where you are, who you... Okay.
Okay, who's presenting the case? You need, you need the mic for the racket?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Goes on racket.
Again, my name is Tony Stella. I'm a civil engineer, and before you tonight, we have a plan and propose for some additional parking at 3035 Cranberry Highway.
Yeah.
The existing parcel is a 1.57 acre parcel. The approximately 38,000 square feet of it's presently paved. The middle portion of the parcel is basically a gravel surface, and then the rear, the rear 7,000 square feet is, contains a boarding vegetated wetland. The reason we're here tonight is in order to get approval for, to add additional parking to the, to the Water Whiz parking lot, which actually is next door to this parcel. The, the proposal is not to change any of the surface conditions that presently exist. The reason we came before the board is because we are going to be increasing parking. However, we had to go before the Conservation Commission because some of the work will fall between the 50-foot no-activity zone and the existing 100-foot buffer zone. So because of that, they directed us here because of the additional parking. But in terms of work, the only work that we're proposing is to clear this area here between the 100-foot wildland and the 50-foot no-activity zone. The rest of the parcel, the existing surface conditions do remain the same. The existing gravel, the existing pavements, and the exist... You know, anything that, that's not paved will stay not paved. And so...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My name is Richard Serke, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, and I just want to give you a brief introduction to the project, if I can.
Okay.
The, the Locust property, which is the former Hong Kong Restaurant parcel, was acquired by RM-RM Realty LLC. by a deed that was filed in April of 2017. That LLC owns neither of the contiguous parcels that comprise the amusement park. Site plan review is required, and I'm quoting now from the zoning bylaw, "For any development, expansion, or change of use, which would, under the parking schedule, require 10 or more spaces." There's no new development, expansion, or change of use proposed for this parcel. The proposed use of this property is simply as a parking lot.
10 or more spaces?
No, the...
Less than 10 spaces?
No, there's more than 10 spaces, but the bylaw states that site plan review is required whenever there's a development, expansion, or change of use which requires 10 or more spaces. There's no development or change of use proposed for this property.
So there's no requirement for parking?
No, no, hold on for a second.
I'm trying to understand the argument.
Okay, just, just give me a second.
Okay.
The proposed use of the property is simply as a parking lot, and the property is owned strip commercial. A commercial parking lot is certainly allowed as a matter of right in the commercial strip zone. So my point is this. The first part of... I disagree with the opinion from the building inspector that indicates that site plan review is necessary, and that's why part of my petition is an appeal from his determination that site plan review is in fact necessary, because there's no development on this property that requires 10 or more spaces. It's simply a parking lot for other property. Now, I'm not resting my argument solely on this, but I just want to preserve that argument for you, because otherwise I would be waiving it. Now, if you determine that site plan review is necessary, in spite of what I've said, then I'm seeking site plan approval, as well as a variance from the otherwise applicable sections of the zoning bylaw. This is a unique situation of a separately-owned parcel that's to be used for purposes that are accessory to a contiguously separate, separately-owned parcel, namely the amusement park. We fully expect that if you grant the petition for site plan approval and the associated variances, it'll be subject to a condition that it will lapse if and when the parking parcel, the Hong Kong Island parcel, is no longer used as a parking lot for patrons of the adjacent amusement park. And we also fully expect that if you grant the application for site plan approval and the associated variances, that there would have to be, among other things, and now I'm going to refer to the pictures that I've, I've shared with each of you, there would have to be entrance and exit controls by means of pavement markings, sawhorses, and personnel, and there would have to be the removal of a berm, which is the third picture in that separates the Hong Kong Island parcel on the left from the amusement parcel on the right. And there would have to be surface improvement in the former restaurant footprint area that's shown on the last picture in your assembly. Looking at the pictures again, if you'd start with picture number one, the parcel we're talking about, as I'm sure you know, is the part of the property to the left of that picture. The property, beginning with the gray building and going to the right, is the amusement park. And the second picture is a picture showing the sign still remaining of Hong Kong Island with the parking property right behind it. The third picture, as I said, is the berm that presently separates the Hong Kong Island parcel from the amusement property. And the fourth picture shows what was formerly the footprint of the restaurant. And as I said a moment ago, there would certainly... You would certainly want to monitor by means of pavement, marking, sawhorses, and personnel the exit entrance controls, because the main entrance to the park is well to the west of these pictures. And what we're talking about here are exit, exit lanes from the park. You'd certainly want to remove the berm that's between the Hong Kong Island property and the amusement park, so that there would be internal flow between both parcels without having to go out onto Route 28. And you'd certainly want to make sure that the surface of the Hong Kong Island property is, is capable, by means of its surface, of holding cars above it. So I just wanted to make those points clear to you.
Is the state taking any of this property? For the highway improvement?
Highway. There are plans for the layout, and I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure...
The state has taken very little of the property, and the front of that, from all the diagrams I've seen, even the existing Hong Kong Island sign is not going to be removed, as according to what the state is showing me.
But the traffic patterns are going to be altered when, when, when the, when the taking is, it, it takes place. And so what we're seeking here is, is to have a temporary workable solution for the patrons of the park until the taking takes place.
That's what I was getting at. I don't want you to do anything permanent, spend all that money for them to take it.
Exactly. We're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to be respectful for safety needs without doing work that'll be undone by the, by the layout of 28. And, and we're not suggesting that the measures that, that we would like to see occur here should be anything other than tied to this property being used as the parking lot for the park, and not a, not, not some kind of a permanent arrangement regardless of whether the uses are separated in the future. If the uses are separated in the future, then all bets are off.
All right. Last, last year, I remember, this time of year, they, we had some issues with... Some work had been done on the existing park, like taking buildings down, pavement. There was no site plan reviews, no studies. And the comment of the building inspector, I really, I strongly believe it's true, and I do agree with him.
Which, which statement?
All his, all his, all his argument, you got a lot of parking spaces deficits. This particular parking is going to be part of the Water Whiz.
It, it's certainly accessory and in, in, in service of the patrons of the Water Whiz. It's separately owned, but it's certainly in service of it.
Right. I know, so if you want to do just pack a lot, are you willing to fence and make its own curb cut? It's going to service the, the Water Whiz, so it's going to be one whole project.
But, but what are you asking?
I'm trying to... What I'm trying to say, you're not asking for just a parking lot set in by itself with its own interest, with, with the fence just by itself. It's going to be an accessory to an existing project that has a big, lot of traffic, and I believe it's, it's got a lot of unsafe activities and a traffic inside, and has been kind of done not properly before.
Well, frankly, to be very candid with you, I'm here just with respect to this parcel.
Okay.
We're trying, we're trying to ameliorate a parking problem. I, I don't think it would be proper to use the petition for creating more parking space as a lever to basically fix all ills that may occur, or may have occurred, or may be present, or may not be present in the park itself, that aren't the subject of an enforcement action, which we're trying, we're trying to solve our parking problem.
Okay, and you're putting more burden on the project, all of it, on the whole project. You're adding more problems.
How are we adding more problems? By accommodating the cars of our patrons.
Because you have problems on the existing park, that's my opinion, personal opinion, that has to be addressed.
What's the existing?
Well, that's, I've been pavement, I mean, they tore the buildings down before, just paved it. There's no islands, there's no particular, the existing Water Whiz.
The house that was there?
No, we're not talking about the, this place, yet, the existing Water Whiz. And there's no proper curb cutting, there's no proper traffic, there's no pro... It's, it's just a chaos there in the summer.
I think...
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
How many... What do we bring in for traffic every year, cars every year, in the summer, a day?
Yeah, I would have to...
How many cars would you like to be able to park for the Water Whiz on a, on a Saturday, on a Saturday day?
On this property?
On the entire, both parcels, the entire operation.
To fit your business. There's a, there isn't, there's an issue with parking there.
Yes.
It's not enough.
Correct.
It's a good thing.
Right.
Okay? We, it's a good thing. They went, they bought Hong Kong Island to give them more property, right? A good thing. Okay? That building still be sitting there now, abandoned, and I saw. So they went and took that down, put an empty lot for parking. It's a good thing.
That's, I agree.
If they need more parking in the back, that's a good thing.
Well, they...
I understand the safety part of it, about, as you say, maybe a temporary barriers or whatever it is to stop traffic from coming out, maybe control it through the main entrance that you always use anyway.
The main entrance will be the entrance?
It will be the entrance.
Exactly. These are not entrances, these are exits.
I'm for this, and I'm going to stay for it. If they have to clear trees, they have to clear trees. I deal with the situation over there, with the cars circling around, trying to find parking, parking in the hotel, crossing Cranberry Highway, which you already have a problem, pedestrians crossing the highway, parking up to any of the businesses that complain about it. The liquor store, all those restaurants, the patrons for Water Whiz parking in their lots. That's not fair to them. But Water Whiz is bringing in a lot of money to this town. 14-year-olds you hire? There's no other... How many other businesses in the town hiring 14-year-olds? I deal with it every day. I have kids in my office for work permits. I'm supporting this. Dave wants to hear this comment.
All right. I, I do, I do agree, they do good business to bring a lot of business in town, but there's way too many curb cuts and way too many unsafe...
We can correct that.
We can, but we can't just add a parking lot without... You can't just say, okay, it's a separate parcel. We could say, okay, fence it from both sides, put it, put it just its own entrance, and you'll have to go walk in the highway to go across, so we have to treat it and, as a one-whole project.
How, how would fencing this project from commonly-used property that's contiguous to it, forcing people to cross the road, be in the public interest?
It wouldn't. That's his point. His point is, he doesn't want to see that happen.
No.
His point is, your argument would demand that to happen. He doesn't want to make it a burden on you, he wants to make it better for you.
Right, so...
So you're trying to skirt having a site plan review, and we're not ready to give that up. We want to see you get open, we want to see you get your parking lot, we know it's going to be hot out soon, and kids are going to want to slide down the slides.
No.
We want that to happen.
Right.
But we don't want it to happen in a chaotic way.
Neither do we.
So maybe we can re... Maybe somehow this evening, this board can grant some relief to allow you to proceed on a temporary basis, but in the long term, we need a site plan review. We need to see your lighting, your curb cuts, how many spaces are going to be parked, how they're going to be parked, are there going to be curb stops? What's the drainage going to be? The whole nine yards, we need it all.
If I may, if I may, before we go, let Mr. Pequena say something. Go ahead, Dave.
All right, so if I can just...
Just the mic.
I just want to make a few comments in response to Attorney Serke's initial presentation. So use... Parking is a use, number one. And in, in our bylaw, it says if it's not, if it's not listed in the bylaw, it leaves it up to me to make a determination as to how many parking spaces are required. I'm not, I'm not inferring that this is not a good idea. I think it is a good idea, and I think it should happen, it needs to happen. But this was an assembly use group that's now just going to be a parking lot, and it packs in pretty tight. Under 910, it's, it's a parking lot not listed. That use is not listed in the parking schedule, so it leaves it up to me to determine how many spaces are required. When I went back to the last study that was done, when they expanded the park, it says, based on their study that they provided, they're required to have 919 parking space, based on their study. The existing parking spaces that they have on-site is 268, and they lease 300. So they've got 568 parking spaces, which means that they're still short 351 spaces, based on their own study. This is going to help them? I agree, 100%. I'm not saying that it's, that it's a bad idea. I'm just saying that, based on that, if you leave it up to me to make that determination as to how many spaces are required, I'm going to say that they're required to have 351 still, because they're still in deficit from what they're required to have under the bylaw. Because they're still in deficit from what they're required to have under the bylaw. They're still short. I think it's a great idea. I'm all for it. But I do think that other measures have to be taken for that parking lot because it's in a bad spot. It packs really tight in there and I just think a few additional safety measures have to be taken. That's all.
Absolutely. Can I, Charlie, Charlie had some comments. You want to express them to the applicant?
Two or three things. And I apologize for not getting a letter around to you any sooner than I did. I was out of the state yesterday. I was sort of waiting to see if we had authorization to go ahead with the review. But in light of the fact that it was a single sheet plan and after reading Mr. Riquina's report and that it required some action under four different articles of the bylaw, I felt it was important at least to make some references to what I observed when I made a site visit and to make some recommendations. The first thing is that clearly this is a seasonal use. And we real- I don't know that we have to worry about anybody sliding down any of those slides January 1st. So if we have to consider snow removal, we can simply discard that. We don't have to worry about that. With respect to the surface of the existing parking lot, it's not in very good shape. Some parts of the paving are broken up. Wherever they took the building out, they backfilled whatever foundation was there and threw a little bit of material over the top of it. But it certainly was left in, in unfinished state and is certainly not in any condition for people to use it. So something would have to be done to put a suitable base in that location. The plan that you see before you, I think, has 95 spaces. That's a small number compared to what they need. But I do agree that anything to improve the situation there is beneficial for everybody. One of the things I ran into when I went out there was that when I attempted to get into that parking lot, I was confused by exactly where I was going to go. The WaterWiz driveway entrance is right there. There is the berm which is side of it. And then there are two small curb openings with an island in between, which after discussing with Mr. Cirque, I find out that both of those entrances are under an easement which are held by the gas station, which is next door. In other words, those two curb cuts, he obtained, I think, back in 1958. So anything with respect to those two curb cuts have got to main, remain in, in basically the condition they're in today in order to satisfy the fact that there's an easement that's there in their benefit. However, I don't think that that means that you have to necessarily ignore that and say that some sort of barrier somehow should be placed beyond that easement line so that anybody who's using the gas station can continue to go in and do so as they are allowed to do. And at the same time, restrict that as an egress or an entrance to this additional parking. It's my view that the main entrance to WaterWiz should be the sole entrance to that, including the portion which we're talking about tonight, by making appropriate cuts in that so you can connect the two together. And the other thing I would note is that, it's on my understanding that the project is under an order of conditions by the Conservation Commission. When I looked at the plan, I didn't see an awful lot of detail on the plan other than the 50-foot and the 100-foot setback, which requires anything done in that area to go before the commission for approval. As I understand it and looking at the plan, there will be some tree removal to expand the parking lot in the back to increase the number of spaces, which means there will be a disturbance of soil. I'm not thoroughly familiar with what's behind that area, whether it's wetland or whether it would be close proximity to it. But I didn't see much in the way of detail on this plan that suggests that the, the slope which is left is going to be stabilized, that proper material would be placed on top of that. Once the stumps are moved, it would be suitable for parking purposes. So in my view, there's some detail that needs to be done, even though it's a limited amount of detail. Even if it were to the point where you don't, and I'm not suggesting this, I'm just saying that if your boards suggest that they don't need to comply fully with Articles 7, 9, 10, and 15, that there are at least some minimal requirements that need to be met to make it safe and to approach some sort of condition with the Conservation Commission that they'll be satisfied with. And at the present time, I just don't see it on that one sheet of plans that you have.
I don't have any objection.
You saying? Let him, your side, Charlie?
Unless you have other questions.
Okay.
I have no, no objection to anything that Mr. Rowley recommended.
All right, go ahead, Carl. What do you want to say?
Do you have, do you have the pictures?
I don't. Yeah, I do. Okay.
The easement is where this island is or to the left of it?
This right here.
If you look at the second picture.
Yeah. To the left of the sign.
Yes.
And to the right of the sign.
And to the right of the sign.
Right.
Is, is easement there?
There are two entry and exit points there. And there's an easement that was drawn back in 1958. It happened to me, my dad's office did it. But it's a triangular parcel of land that covers the entire frontage of this lot.
You guys know about that?
Oh, yes, I get.
In the summer, they blocked the entrance to Sawhorses where the island is. Those two entrances are blocked off.
On, on the WaterWiz property.
On the WaterWiz property.
There's, there's three curb cuts on our property and the further two.
And I agree with the berm definitely. If we do anything, that berm should be taken out.
Yep.
That's between the two properties.
But if, if they block the entrance to that, then effectively they're blocking an easement that belongs to the gas station.
They won't be blocking, not taking that berm.
Not that easy.
The berm's going to be going between two properties.
You're talking about the, the other berm, the.
And then that traffic, then the, the traffic can stay on that property and go in and out of that entrance.
Charlie, he's talking about this berm.
What I'm talking about on the first page is this entrance that's between the utility pole and what appears to be the entrance to WaterWiz. That's the beginning of the easement and it goes from there to the gas station.
What I'm talking about is the berm being removed, the traffic in state.
If they stay on WaterWiz, then that, that's what I'm recommending that they do and remove the berm so you can get at this second piece from the WaterWiz driveway.
They're probably removing that berm?
But you cannot.
That's what you want to do, isn't it?
For the purpose, for the purpose of maintaining the easements and benefit of the gas station, whatever things you do to block that as being a point of egress or access into the second lot, needs to be put behind that easement. It can't be put right out at the edge of the island because you'll then be blocking the access that the gas station people have a right to.
Have you communicated with the gas station?
I, yes.
We have no problem with what Mr. Rowley recommended.
And I, I'm not suggesting in particular method one way or the other. I'm only thinking about the fact that there is an easement of record that these people have and that no one has the right to block that. But I also understand there's the safety issue involved and that somehow people should be restricted from trying to use those because they need to go in by the main entrance to WaterWiz.
Unless they go into the gas station.
Correct.
Yes, go ahead.
This is the easement that Mr. Rowley is referring to.
Right, okay.
This is the.
Gas station.
Filling station. This is the park, this is the subject parcel. And for the, for the, for the reasons mentioned by Mr. Rowley, this is the, the, one entrance and this is the other to the site and neither can be blocked. And I think what, what Mr. Rowley is suggesting is like in, in a barrier back here.
A barrier on the, on the property.
On the property that would allow the easement rights to be exercised, but would also control the, the flow. And that's fine.
When you say a barrier, you're, we won't have access through there?
No, we will.
Okay.
It's controlled by us.
What, what I'm trying to say the whole thing about the whole project as a whole, I'm looking at the project as a whole, okay? There's way too many curb cuts and there was few activities were done few, than the last few years. You guys took some buildings and they paved them without any site plan. Correct me if I'm wrong. Did you guys do this or not?
We had a demolition permit. I don't know that there was a site.
Okay, but I mean, we can't just park everywhere. We do appreciate the business you do and you give jobs to the town and everything. But this place, the way I see it run, I know you have people, you have wood barracks and the bar- berets and stuff to control the traffic, but I don't think it's safe enough. There's way too many traffic, way too many kids going in and out and way too many curb cuts.
If I may, so on the current WaterWiz property, there are three curb cuts. There's the main entrance, which is both in and out. And then right before the Hong Kong Island, there's an additional two curb cuts. We're very happy removing those two curb cuts.
Right, but we need a plan for that. We, we're not against giving you a parking. That's a great idea, what you're saying, like everyone agrees to. I mean, you need more than that, which, the more you add, the better you do. But we need a whole plan that combines everything together to put it to rest. It's way to, it's a piece here, piece there. And the, the less curb cuts, the better, the safer. And you have to control that parking lot better. I mean, I've been there, my kids have been there. It's, it's a great business, but it's, it's crazy. It's way too many crazy inner traffic.
What's going to happen is the gas station's still going to want to come in here.
What they have to cut, they have to keep that, they have to keep it open.
Yeah, so.
So I do, I still, I still do, stick with, with Mr. Pequena's idea. We need a site plan. I would like to, to see a site plan for the whole place combined together.
For separate properties?
Well, okay, separate properties, then. I'm not, if you're making a parking lot by itself, in my personal opinion, if you would just want to build a parking, I won't let, my personal opinion, I will not grant you, I won't let you move the curb between. I would, I would ask for, to have a fence between the properties. If that's how you want to play as a separate property, I will ask a fence from both sides. That's my opinion. I'm not, I don't know about the board. You might convince the board the other way. Either we're going to see a major site plan for the whole thing or you want to treat it as a separate party, property, I'll treat it as a separate, separate property.
You're saying that in order to allow the Hong Kong Island parcel to be used as a parking lot, you want to see a site plan for the entire amusement park?
Yes. That's my opinion.
Okay, that, I, I have to respectfully disagree.
I, I, that's, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. All right, I just kind of ask the boards one at a time. Wilma, do you have a quick comment on that?
I, I agree with you. We should have a whole site plan layout of the park and the parking lot. The other thing, if you look at the pictures, parking, that area they want to use as a parking lot is dangerous. Plus, if they don't do, pave it or put some kind of substance, cars that go in there and park are going to leak. Fuel can leak fuel into the soil, which could go into wetlands in the back.
Right, so it needs a drainage, proper drainage and all that.
Yep.
All right, Ken, you want to say anything?
The parking spaces on the, on the lower end, the southern end here, down near the wetland buffer, they access into adjoining property?
Yeah, they access from the WaterWiz side of the park.
So you, you only way you can get there is from circulation from the other side?
What's that? I'm sorry.
The only way you can get to those parking spaces is by access from the other.
Correct.
From the other lot.
Well, it's, yeah, but the whole thing, the, the curb, if the curb remains open, the curb cut remains open, it really doesn't matter which way you come in. Or where, once you come into the property, you'd be going to the WaterWiz side or to the, the, the Hong Kong Island side to park.
My turn. Ken, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm trying to cipher this plan a little bit. There was parking when Hong Kong structure stood.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious, why is the sign still up? Are you trying to protect some sign rights or?
Oh, no.
I keep wanting to go there for Chinese food. I get in the parking lot and I can't find the door to get in. I'm just wondering, you know, if there was a reason to keep that sign, like maybe you're going to add a Chinese restaurant or a Chinese slide or.
Oh, no.
A tiki slide or?
No, 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 no.
It is a good sign.
It's a good signage. Anyway, this, um, this parcel of contention, if you will, most of it is already cleared. Is that correct?
Yes, except for what.
And I may look in here and I think I see, I think I see a spoil pile or something like that. Is that the area? What, how much needs to be cleared? How much of this needs? Just that little, that little, okay, so it's all the way over to the corner of the back of the building? So it represents, um, let me see.
It's where the foundation of the building was.
One, two, three, four, five, six, 12. Gee, it's going to end up being 30, 40 parking spaces, 31-ish.
31, yeah. And that, that area needs to, needs to be properly surfaced. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, but I mean, we go to the Barnstable County Fair and we park on a lawn, you know? And nobody complains because it's, because it's seasonal, because it happens once a year. Now, I'm not saying that's okay in this instance.
Yeah.
But my point or my question is, is, and I'm speaking to you and to my fellow members of the board at the same time, the season's upon us. They're ready to go. I would like to be able to see them, you know, make a grass parking lot or a gravel parking lot or something and know that their feet are held to the fire and they got to come back here and they got to show us lighting and drainage and grading and yet. But in the meantime, if I had a kid that wanted to go down that slide and I had to choose between not going there or parking on an unimproved area, they'd quickly put my vehicle on an unimproved area. They'd choose to park, they'd choose to park in the street if the cops would allow them. I get the attraction. So I'm very much in favor of allowing you to do something to get some relief, but not walk out of here feeling that you're not coming back and showing us. And, and I agree with the rest of the board that we want to see the, the site. I know it seems punitive, but we want to see the plan for the whole park. The lighting, the drainage.
We keep bringing up lighting. They're not open at night for one.
Well, they are open at night.
Where are they?
Close at 6:00.
We close at 6:00.
6 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Well, then, 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 then that's.
That's not.
That's why we need to see the plan.
Exactly.
And when you say full plan, including the interior of the park or are we just talking about the parking?
I don't, I, I have, I profess, and I don't think this board professes to be experts on your business. Our concern is public safety, parking and egress and, you know, and drainage. There's a wet one here and we're not in the conservation bit. That's the, that's another whole board. We just, if we mandate the plan, then every board can benefit by it. That's my, you know, I want to see you open. I want to see you get every parking spot you can. But I want you to know that you're not done.
All right.
That's my point.
We, we did mention, last year, this time of year, we did give them heads up to make a site plan for the whole thing. We did give them reasonable time.
Okay.
Anyway, Jake, Jen.
I mean, I.
No, they didn't, but.
I don't, I don't know if I, I'm on board with needing a site plan for the entire park.
For the parking?
For the entire park, okay.
I mean, I'm almost in waffling and inclined to buy Attorney Cirque's argument, but I think that, you know, after hearing everyone's discussion, I think that a site plan with respect to this new area, but I don't think a site plan for the entire park with the parking, that's my opinion.
So now.
Go ahead.
How many property, how many parking spots did you, you lease?
Did you lease?
Or, or rent for the?
How many?
Is it 300 or something?
300.
300.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, 300.
300.
We're not asking for a site plan for that 300.
No, it's all leased parking.
Hold on, hold on. All right, so we're not asking for that. This is a separate parcel, okay? If they choose to lease, WaterWiz chooses to lease this parcel, we shouldn't have that, have, as we said, a site plan for the property, for this property, not the complete WaterWiz. Because they may be leasing, WaterWiz may lease this property from this company for their parking. We're not asking for off-site site. So I'm against the complete site plan. If you want to do a site plan for this property, that's one thing. The lighting, I'll never go with farther lighting because.
Right, we agree with that.
Different type of business that comes in, that's one thing. They're closed, so.
Well, it did, that's why we need a plan. You do still have some lighting. I mean, it's an open parking for, at night, somebody, I mean, if the cops driving by, they got to see what's going on in the back. I mean, that's a pretty deep parking lot, so you can't just go without lighting at all.
They sit there all night long and all night long.
I know. But anyway, going back, going back to the subject. So if you want to treat it as a separate parcel, I, we, we do need site plan review. I disagree with this. That's my opinion and we need to see.
I franked my petition in the alternative. On the one hand, I said I wanted to preserve my right to claim that I don't need site plan approval. If you, if you disagree with me on that, then I'm asking for site plan approval and the associated variances. So I'm, I'm not here to say. So I'm, I'm not here to say I don't need to be in front of you, see you later. What I'm saying is I wanna preserve my right to say that I don't need to be in front of you, but if you feel I do, I'm asking for the approval, and I'm asking for the associated variances, and I'm willing to, to comply with everything that Mr. Rowley recommended in terms of controlling the traffic in and out, and in terms of whatever this board, 'cause I've heard different points of view, wants with respect to the surface of the area, the form of foundation. And certainly, the interior berm needs to be removed, so that there can be free flow between the parcels without having to come out onto Route 28.
And that'll be on a temporary basis until the site plan?
No, no, that's, that's, that's the site plan.
That'll be part of it, okay.
Okay, if you, uh, I, I, I do recommend a site plan review, then, my, that's my opinion. I wanna go with Charlie saying, I agree with Charlie, and.
But we don't need to see the interior of the park where all the slides and all that are.
No.
You're more interested in the site and what the parking is, so that there be?
I wanna go with Charlie's recommendation. I would like to see Charlie's recommendation get implemented.
Can he repeat it?
Yes.
It's none of our business what's going on outside. We deal with this property and this property only.
First thing I would say, that the easement, which is to the benefit of the gas station, needs to be preserved.
Right.
Fine. Open in all respects.
Yeah.
Within the area that is defined by that land court plan.
Yeah.
It's an area that covers the entire width of the parcel, and on the gas station side, it goes back a depth of sixty feet. It's a triangle.
Yeah.
So, that has to be preserved.
Right.
In some fashion, behind that easement line, that is where I think there needs to be some sort of a buffer, which would prevent people from gaining access to this site through either of those two curb cuts that are on this property.
Correct.
Fine.
Yes, and that the main entrance, which is the Waterways entrance next door, would be how you get into this property, through maybe one or two cuts in that berm, whatever is necessary to make for good circulation.
Absolutely.
The next thing would be to determine, uh, the board would have to determine, I guess, whether or not the existing pavement is okay. It's broken up in some places, and certainly the area where the old restaurant was, the material needs to be taken out to a reasonable depth to allow, say, eight inches of reclaimed material to be put within that area, compacted, graded, so that it's a durable surface for people to drive on. And the last thing would be details with respect to how they treat the area that is subject to conservation approval. Not because we're interfering with what conservation has granted them approval to do, but because it's designed in an area that may have a slope to it. They're removing stumps, removing trees, removing topsoil, and you need to have a surface that people will then be able to park on in that area. So we need to see some detail in that respect.
All right, did you get what he said?
Yes.
All right, and also, I'd like to see, like, the plan to be ran by the fire department, to see how that truck can flow in there if there's a fire, if, let's say, a car go on a fire.
They need access, but they, what they want.
So this is a part of the site plan review?
This is what they'll see when they go in. I mean, that, it, we're, we're talking about operational controls during the, during the operation of the park, in terms of the, the buffer area behind it. And entrances. Anyway, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're not gonna, at the present time, if they go there, they're not gonna see anything but what exists today.
Yeah, right.
But they need to have some idea as to what the configuration will be, once it's put into effect.
Yeah.
And that whatever proper barriers are included here are shown, so that they know this is where they're gonna go.
If a customer to the park?
One other time, please.
Excuse me, a customer of the park comes there and decides to have a charcoal barbecue in the trunk of their car, and their gas tank catches on fire, how's the apparatus gonna put that fire out? That's the, that's the fire question.
Understood.
Uh, it sounds like a crazy thought, but?
I understand.
People are crazy.
I, I understand.
They have plenty of staff, but that doesn't happen.
Things, accident happens, but anyway, so, are you willing to come back with the site plan?
We're willing to come to, to, to do what Mr. Rowley recommends, but we, we are under the situation where the park is supposed to open on Saturday, and I'm wondering whether you could grant approval, if, if you, if you decide to deny my appeal, but to grant site plan approval, subject to the conditions that Mr. Rowley recommended, then at least we'd be able to proceed this weekend.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to do better than this. I would just let it go, you just use it, but you'll come back. But if you don't come back, like, we asked you last year, next year you'll have a problem. You could go ahead, I'm, we're not gonna give you, like, permission to park. You could just use it like you did last year.
Yeah.
If we are to give you a permission to park and something happened, we're kinda liable that you just parked, so I wouldn't give a, I wouldn't give.
So what would be the status of the petition before you, then? Are you gonna continue with this?
Come back with the site plan.
Come back with the site plan.
And continue it, and answer all, everything Mr. Rowley wants.
Okay, okay.
I would still try to control those entrances.
Yeah.
As you guys have.
Right.
Continue this.
I, are you saying that you're not gonna take a vote now as to whether or not you're gonna make a recommendation to the applicant, that they go by some of the things that I've suggested?
They have to comply with what you said.
He just, he just agreed to that.
We agree, they have to comply with what you said. They gotta come back with the plans to satisfy you, to satisfy all your comments.
All right, all right, I'll, I'll let him go with that. The only, no, that's all.
Go ahead, go ahead, no, no.
No, no.
I wanna hear it.
If it's the board's, if it's the board's view that you're not gonna take action on this now, then it's pointless to talk about the access, and that they will continue to use those access points just as they have, right?
Right now, they use, they, they keep using the, what they doing.
Basically, what you're saying is, use it now, they'll hold this in a variance and come back at a later date.
They know what they have to do, and if it doesn't get done.
When do you want us, when do you want us back?
We can't tie their hands on, on their business.
How long you need, how much time you need to come back with the plan? Are you engineer?
What about, what about cutting any trees or anything in the meantime? No? I mean, we don't give permission to cut or not cut, but, I mean, whatever.
Six weeks, month, six week, month, six weeks.
Under fifty thousand feet, so.
Under fifty thousand feet, so.
Can we come back in a month?
Sure. You wanna request a continuance for?
Yes.
For two meetings from now?
Yes.
For three meetings from now?
They can.
One month would be two meetings from now.
Say three meetings from now.
Three, three meetings from now.
July eleventh.
Almost conservation is approved, that you can still cut trees.
Yeah, we, we, we've got an order of conditions.
Yeah, and it's under fifty thousand square feet, so you could, yeah.
So you can, you can go ahead and, you know, scouts honor and all that stuff, and if you guys are good, and you come back and you've behaved, you know, then we'll treat you fairly. And if you guys are naughty, then you come back, we'll treat you fairly.
I think we, since there is an appeal before us, don't we need to make a vote officially as to whether or not site plan review is required, since there is a pending?
I'll, I'll waive the time requirements for that, so you can, you can act on it all when we come back.
So we're just gonna continue?
No.
Yeah, we'll continue, so.
He's saying three meetings from tonight.
July twenty-fifth?
July twenty-five.
That good?
Yep. I make a motion, we continue this until July twenty-fifth.
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh. Perfectly fine, thank you.
July what, twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, boy.
All right, I gotta excuse myself for a minute.
Yeah, everybody turn everything in, so they can get this folder closed and nothing crossed filed, please.
Yeah, you can handle it.
What's the next one? The next one's, Archipinti is gonna be next, but we're gonna take a couple of minutes. Is that everything? Yeah, I think it is. Thank you. Oh, here's some more pitches. Get these in there, too. Anything else on the?
You too, Kyle. No one needs to hear what I have to say.
No, yeah, what you have to say is good.
I, I don't think that according to those pitches, I would be cutting water. Good God, you said, who you that? You don't, you're just getting out.
Mine doesn't even shut off.
Yeah.
I will get them.
You're up next, right?
Yeah.
All right. Next petition.
Haven't read it yet.
All right, next public hearing, eighteen dash eighteen, Joseph Archipinti, Two Agawam Beach Road.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, at six eighty PM, in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one. To consider, petition number eighteen dash eighteen, for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Joseph V. Archipinti, care of attorney Richard Burke, thirty-two Williams Street, New Bedford, Mass. oh-two-seven-four-oh, seeking to build on a lot that does not meet minimum frontage requirements, located at Two Agawam Beach Road, Wareham, Mass. That's on Assessors Map nineteen, Lot J-three, in the R-sixty zoning district. Thank you.
Name and others for the record, please.
Good evening, Richard Burke, Borahard Burke and Franco in New Bedford, thirty-two Williams Street in New Bedford, representing Mr. Archipinti.
And Mr. Archipinti is the owner?
He is, this is Mr. Archipinti.
Okay.
He's at Eight Agawam Beach Road is his address.
All right, and he owns the property?
He does.
Okay, and you have a new package, the, the deed?
Yes, yes.
All right, do you wanna proceed, tell us what you don't?
Mr. Archipinti lives at Eight Agawam Beach Road, and he owns this lot, which is at Two Agawam Beach Road. It's in the R-sixty zoning district. In the packet that we filed with our petition as Exhibit A, is the plan, the original subdivision plan that shows this lot, and I enlarged the lot at question, which is Lot Three, so you could see what the lot looks like. It's a sixty thousand square foot lot. It's in a very unusual shape, in that it's a, it's on a, a corner. This lot was part of a seven lot subdivision that was approved by the planning board in two thousand and three. Lot Three is in approximately the middle of the, of the lots. Obviously, at that point in time, the planning board must have determined that all of the lots, including the lot in question, had the required frontage, because they couldn't have approved the Form A plan otherwise. The zoning bylaw requires a hundred and eighty feet of frontage, and the, the lot in total has a lot more than that, if, if you look at the total frontage on both Great Neck Road and as it continues on Agawam Beach Road. But the technicality that brings us here tonight for a variance petition is that the building commissioner has determined, the way frontage is defined on corner lots, is that you measure from one side lot line to the midpoint of the corner arc length. And so when you do that, if you measure from one sideline along Great Neck Road, just along Great Neck Road only, the lot has over a hundred and seventy-five feet. It's short by four point oh-nine feet, and that's the variance that we're seeking. But the same lot line continues along, on Agawam Beach Road, and along Agawam Beach Road, it has over a hundred and eleven feet. So in total, the lot has over a hundred feet beyond what is required, but because of its unusual shape on this corner lot, which is dictated really by the street layout, as you can see on the plan, it's an unusual frontage shape, and that's what sets up this corner arc, that creates this four point oh-nine feet that we're technically short under the, under the definition of a frontage on corner lots. So we're seeking a variance of just under five feet, but in total, we really have over a hundred feet beyond what would be required. We think that this is a hardship to the land. This is a very unusual shaped lot, given the way it's configured, and the way the roads come together, and the unusual, the, the length that it does have in frontage along both roads. It's, it certainly is a hardship to Mr. Archipinti if, if he can't build on this lot. He bought this lot as an approved buildable lot, as part of a seven lot subdivision. It's part of his retirement plan. Obviously, he would suffer a great loss if, if, if he could not build on this lot. He has been paying taxes as a buildable lot since two thousand and three, and obviously, we think that there is a benefit to the town. If this lot is built, there'll be increased tax revenue to the town. There was, in addition to the planning board approval back in two thousand and three, a variance was granted by this board for the very same reasons. Due to medical reasons and other reasons, Mr. Archipinti couldn't proceed with construction at that point, but he, he is ready to do so now. I understand that at one previous meeting, there was one neighbor who spoke in opposition, who also bought a lot among the seven lot subdivision. Obviously, they knew that this was intended to be a buildable lot, because it's part of the seven lot subdivision. The lot is subject to covenants that apply to all seven of the lots, and as I understand it, the neighbor expressed some concern of, hey, I paid a lot for my lot, what's gonna be built there? Well, anything that's built there would have to apply to the same covenants, in terms of the size of the building and that sort of thing. We would be also willing to stipulate, as was the case back in two thousand and three, when the last variance was granted, that we will comply as a condition with all of the setback, both from the street, from the side lot lines. There's no problem with that with this lot, given the size of the lot. It's just a very, a very de minimis technical issue with regard to, with regard to the frontage. So we respectfully ask that you grant a variance, so that this lot can be built on. There is a buyer that's interested, and he would build a, a lot, build on the lot consistent with the covenants with the other houses that are there. Joe, do you wanna?
Yes, sir.
I live at Eight Agawam Beach Road, and this lot was approved twice before, obviously, you mentioned that, once on the original plan, and on, we got a variance in two thousand and three. I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
All right.
That's one last point, is that certainly, we don't think it's derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. It's, or, it's, it's no hardship to the neighborhood. If you look in the neighborhood itself, most of the lots in the neighborhood are on smaller lots than this, with less square footage and less frontage. And as I, as I said, the lot itself, it, it has the sixty thousand square feet that's required, and in total, it has over a hundred feet more frontage than required. It's just this technical calculation, because it's a corner lot. Thank you.
Very, thank you. Just, we're gonna run some questions by the board. Wilma, what do you wanna say?
I, I just was wondering, what's, where and what the house would look like that they're gonna plan on putting on here? They haven't, I mean, did you know on how it stands, or what it?
Well, we?
Placed on the lot?
We, we did include in the package, as I believe it's Exhibit C, is a, is this, a septic plan that was approved for the lot, and it, and it shows a, a potential sighting of a house on the lot, where it would be situated, how it would be set back to meet the frontage requirement, or the, the setback in requirements of the sides and the front. And you can see that on Exhibit C. Obviously, the exact sighting, the exact house that would be built, would be determined by any prospective buyer, but as I said, we would, we would, we would stipulate as a condition to any variance that? variance that if you grant this frontage variance, that anything that's built on this lot would have to comply with all of the other zoning bylaw requirements, including setbacks from the side lot lines and the front and the rear and the size of the house and so forth.
The covenants has a twenty-two-hundred square foot minimum size house with a two-car garage.
The house sighting that you see on Exhibit C is probably very representative of what it would look like, and you can see where it would be on the lot and how it would comply with all of the setback requirements.
But a ranch would not, you couldn't run the ranch this way. You'd have to run the ranch that way.
It's a colonial that's proposed.
So you know what it's going to look like, the house that's going to be built?
Absolutely.
So you would have, you would have a plan that you.
We have a plan. It was submitted once before.
Presented to us.
It was submitted once before and a building permit was issued.
Wilma, if I may, the variance just for the lot, I mean, with the kind of house, we can't really dictate what kind of house they could build.
But it's not, it's not the house alone that we want. We want to see how it's going to be placed.
Well, they do have on Exhibit C, like the gentleman say, like, they do have what's going to look like.
Well, I just.
On Exhibit C.
It's got to conform to side and front and rear setbacks.
Yes.
All right, let me, we'll get back to you. Ken, you want to say anything?
Just that this is one of those punitive items in zoning that I don't understand, and I support the variance request.
All right, Jimmy.
No questions.
Jake.
I support this.
Jen.
I don't have any questions.
Carl.
I support the project.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak against, in favor first? Anyone in favor? In favor? Yes, sir. We'll get back to you in just a minute. Name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Fitzgerald. I'm in Abutter. I own ten Agawam Beach Road. It's a vacant lot. It's one of the seven that was approved in two thousand and three when Mr. Madden and his team at GAF designed the seven lot subdivision. And I'm in Abutter, and I've seen the houses that are there. I've seen the land. They've done a beautiful job. I just want to say that there are deed restrictions, so Mr. Archipinti is going to have to live by those as everyone else has. And it is a twenty-two-hundred square foot house minimum with an attached two-car garage. And as Mr. Archipinti's attorney said, we're just here because there's a little issue with some frontage because of how it's calculated. He's not short frontage. It's just not calculated as straight frontage.
All right, thank you. Want to speak again, sir? Want to come forward?
Yes, we live at one thirty.
Your name first.
David Cogswell.
Yeah.
And this is my wife Christine.
Yeah.
We live at one thirty-two Great Neck Road, and we feel that the house being set back because of the lack of frontage on Agawam Street, the house is on Agawam Street, not Great Neck Road. It would be pushed back and would be detrimental to the value of our home. That's where we stand.
So you think it's too close to the road?
Too close to our house. It's going to be sitting like in our front yard, right beside our driveway, and it's going to devalue our home.
So you would like it to be set forward more?
Well, Agawam Beach Road, they only have a hundred and eighteen feet.
Right.
Frontage. It's not a hundred, it's not four feet less. It's.
Okay.
Less than that.
And you are, if you're looking at the house, you aren't to the right or to the left?
It'd be to the left.
You are to the left.
Well, we're on Great Neck Road. They're on Agawam Beach Road, and my driveway runs perpendicular to it.
How far are you from your property line?
Probably ten feet.
No, your house only ten feet?
Oh, no, no, no. Thirty feet on the side there. Probably thirty-four.
Probably at least forty-five.
Probably, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, and he's got forty-six. You're looking about ninety feet.
Yeah.
That's quite a distance.
I'm just thinking that it's going to be like in my front yard, basically.
Well, we're respectfully, we're talking about a house that's going to be constructed in all respects within what's allowed in the bylaw, so.
On the covenant, you meant, and the bylaw?
And the covenants, right, so any concern with respect to how close it may be to your property line is otherwise allowed by the covenants and the bylaw, so there's nothing to prohibit that.
But what is the frontage allow? It's a hundred and eighty, and they have a hundred and eighteen.
Well, they're talking about the other side, so they are five feet short. They could use either side, so they're using the bigger side. So it doesn't matter which frontage you use, so apparently they're going to use the bigger frontage for the advantage.
Well, I think it's, I think these people are entitled to state their opinion, and I thank them for their.
So is it possible, I mean, would you like them to turn the house a little bit, set it back more? Would that make you happier if they set it back more?
It's already ninety feet, right? Approximately ninety feet.
The way it's kind of, the land runs, it's, I don't even know where they would put the house.
Yeah, it would be kind of like.
If it's a hundred and eighteen feet, like, how's their side yard going to be? How's their backyard going to be?
It's going to devalue our house, for sure.
Okay, but if they.
We had to make sure we had a hundred and eighty.
All right, if they go stake the house, if they have the engineer go stake the house so you could see what it's going to sit, would that make you happy to see what it's going to sit, and we could comment from there?
Well, does everybody in Wareham only have to get a hundred and eighteen feet?
No, it's each area separate, you know, each zone, there's way too many different zones, so it's different in each area.
So in our area, is it only going to have to be a hundred and eighteen feet? I'm just.
No, in your area has to be hundred eighty, and that's why they're here for a variance, and apparently the previous board in two thousand and three agreed with them because they had shown a hardship to the land, which is, I agree with the hardship, the land has a hardship, not the person. The land has to have its hardship, and I do agree that the land has a hardship, the way it's, the way it's like shaped. So they do have, they do show a hardship. I do not believe it's a detriment to the neighborhood either.
I mean, if it's not a buildable lot, then.
Well, that's why they're here. It is a buildable with the variance. If they show a hardship, I believe they show the hardship. I, that's my opinion, so we'll see what the board says.
I think they're entitled to their opinion, and we should take it under advisement, and when we take our vote, we'll vote accordingly.
We could do that.
They stated their objection. I don't see a benefit in waxing redundant.
Right, now, Mr. Archipinti?
Yes.
I mean, if you need to set the house a little bit back further, you have no problem with that?
If the house goes back further, it's closer to their house.
That's right. We wouldn't want it back, but we want it forward more.
Okay, can you push it a little forward, one at a time?
It's presently close to three hundred feet from this house to their house. Their house is approximately where the North Arrow is on the plan.
If you look at.
Exhibit C.
On the septic plan.
Septic plan, which is.
They have a long driveway, runs right around the property line. It's full of trees and buffers, and then you make a turn to the left to their house.
All right. Anderson. All right, like I said, and my clerk said here, we'll take your opinion in consideration, and we'll let you know. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Here none? Yes, sir.
Did you have something else you wanted to say?
No.
All right, so we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who else want to speak?
Thank you.
There's a man in the back that wanted to, did you want to speak, sir? With the purple shirt on?
No.
Did you want, yeah, he's coming up. You're in opposition or in favor?
Favor.
Favor, thank you.
Kendallus, I'm the prospective buyer for the lot, and I would work with the neighbors and move the house forward, back, but the house has to be built. I don't know really what they want. I was here with them the last time, and they came to me and said that they, the house would be forward too far, or it'd be too back, or it's kitty conning, whatever way. It doesn't make, I would face it towards Agawam Beach Road or Great Neck kitty conning, as long as I'm within the variance, whatever the front and setbacks are.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is, so you buying the place, you were the previous applicant, and that was about six to eight months ago?
Yes.
So now the applicant is pretty much the same person, isn't it?
Yes.
That's not a good answer, kind of.
I think the owner is here, and, you know, you wanted the owner here before, and they've had discussions about selling, but Mr. Archipinti is the owner of the property.
I was sick at the time and couldn't come to the last meeting.
I understand, and why did you sue us?
Because we couldn't come back for two years.
We wanted to be able to present to the board the information that you didn't have at the earlier meeting, including what the plan would look like, which did exist, which is where the house would be sighted on the property, which is Exhibit C.
I believe, I believe when you would, the earlier denial was denied without prejudice, so your belief that you couldn't come back for two years was an error. I believe Town Council has spoken with your council, and you guys have agreed that it was an error. The suit was an error, and it's all behind us.
Yeah, we filed it just to clarify that we could have a remand, and we reached a quick agreement with Town Council for a remand.
There was nothing to agree to. There was no two-year moratorium.
All right, very well. Anyone else want to speak? Here none. Let's move to closer.
I so moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Carl. In favor to close the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, wishes?
I'm satisfied that it's a minor point. I'm ready to make a motion to grant the variance.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Jim, second by Carl. In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, it carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, hold the paper. All right, nineteen dash eighteen, Joseph Nado, fifty-four Nanomet Street. Want to come forward?
I'm going to, you get them there. I'm going to pass it, oops, yeah, I'm going to pass it forward and all to Wilma first. Wilma, would you sign this? It's in the folder. Wilma just did. Yeah, and put these in behind you. Thank you. Usually I go the other way, but I'm doing it to you first.
All right, let's move as quickly as possible. It's getting late.
No, 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 here, right here, four. Are these both the same folder?
That's the old folder.
Okay. His plans. This four. Take one. Here's two. Here we go. And I don't know what this is.
The one we just did.
Oh, to sign. That's, everybody signed it all the way down to the left?
Yeah, we all signed it.
Thank you. I see what you said. I thought you said that's to sign.
I heard to sign.
Yeah.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero-two-five-seven-one, to consider petition number nineteen dash eighteen for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six-twenty-one, Article Thirteen, Section thirteen thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Joseph Nado, fifty-four Nanomet Street, Buzzards Bay, Mass. oh-two-five-three-two, seeking to raise an existing concrete block staircase and replace it with a larger pressure-treated deck within the required front yard setback located at fifty-four Nanomet Street, Buzzards Bay, Mass. on Assessors Map Three, Lot twenty-two, in the M.R. thirty zoning district.
Good evening.
How are you?
Name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Nado, fifty-four Nanomet Street, Anonset. Asking for a special permit and variance to replace the block concrete porch that was there with the pressure-treated deck that was there. That is there. The setback, I guess, is not within, because it's not, my house itself is not within the setback requirements. It's supposed to be within twenty feet, and it's, I think it's nine. I'd have to get the plans. The house itself physically from the street is nine foot four. That's the front of the house. The original porch came out to like six foot six to the last step. The deck that I actually put on is, it came out to six foot six. I kept that the same. And what I like to do is, because it's within the twenty feet, it's not within the laws, and I like to get a variance and a special permit for that.
All right, David, that's an existing non-conforming, right?
The house is a lawfully non-conforming house.
Yep.
There was a porch there. He removed the porch without permits and constructed a larger deck, so it was caught after the fact. It's already in existence.
How big was the porch before?
It was. Pictures of it?
Six feet, maybe.
Did you see this?
Oh, the steps?
Yeah, the steps. Yeah, it was concrete steps. It was actually failing. The railing was falling down, and the block was actually, I was getting water into my basement. I had come back from deployment. I was overseas for eight months, and I needed to get this done before the winter time was coming, so, and that's why I did that, and I did it without a permit, and I apologize for that, David. I'm coming before the board, so I did want to make it bigger so I could sit out there, but the landing's not going toward the street. The old landing went toward the street. The landing will be going to my sidewalk, to the sidewalk, going toward my driveway.
So the stairs will be on the sides?
Yes.
All right, Wilma, what do you want to say?
There's a drawing on that.
Let's do it quick. We're getting late.
Six feet coming out to the road, and it is almost on the road. I cannot see what he's, he didn't even put in the measurements of the, what he had going down on his plan, you know, and I feel that he should have given us that, and it doesn't even show where the stairs are going to be going off.
Well, there's a separate drawing on that, ma'am.
On this plan?
Not on that plan.
One, sir, hold on. All right, there's a picture in there. Do you see it? While you're looking at the picture, Ken, what do you say?
Nothing.
Jim?
No comments, no questions.
Just for the record, Jake Morrison will be voting, and this Jen Cantrick walked away at eight o'clock, eight oh-one. Thank you. Jake?
Carl? No, I support the project.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor? Against? I just want.
No, I just wanted to say that one of the neighbors at fifty-six Nanomet came into my office and said they were in support of. and said they were in support of the project.
Okay.
So if I was to build just egress, it would have to come out four feet. The portion of the deck itself would have to come out four feet, and then going toward the street, it's almost three feet. So the stairs would... The last stair would come out. It would be like seven over... Just a little over seven feet before the last stair would drop down. It would actually be past where the stairs... The deck is right now.
Right.
So...
Don't say anything?
Is the stairs now...
I apologize for doing the thing without a permit.
The stairs now with the new laws don't comply with setbacks, right? Or half of them?
It never did comply.
No, it never did, no.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
The stairs now, do they have to comply with setbacks?
Yes, they do.
They do? Even with the new thing that passed?
The only exemption is for accessibility. If it was a ramp used for accessibility, it would be exempt from setbacks.
Okay.
If it's less than four feet in height, it's half the required setback under what was just passed, but...
That's what I'm asking. If it's less than four feet high, you get half?
It's half the required setback, but in this case, you still doesn't have one.
Right. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yeah?
Am I getting it that if you left the existing concrete steps, you walked out your front door and came down and walked into the street?
Yes, sir.
And the way you're reconstructing it is you're gonna come out your front door, and there's gonna be a rail that stops you from going into the street?
Yes, sir.
And you're gonna have to take a right-hand turn and go down into your own yard?
Yes, sir.
So in your opinion, you've created a safer situation?
Yes, sir. And I'm gonna have...
Even though you've embellished it a little bit so you can put a rocking chair there and watch the people walk by?
I'm gonna be a grandpa in September, so, first one, so...
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Here, none. Let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You guys wanna... If it's not a two detriment, so let's treat it as a special permit. We get relief from 1335, I believe.
You're looking for Dave's letter?
Yeah, right here. So if we feel it's not so much detriment to the neighborhood because it's existing nonconforming, we could go with a special permit.
Instead of a variance?
Yeah. You guys feel this way?
I don't believe it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, so do I have a second for that?
I second it. I don't feel it is either.
All right, so we have a second, so it's a special permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, and now what's the wishes?
Grant it as a special permit and let the man finish his project.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, abstain, so 4-1-0. Thank you. You're good to go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck. Come back safe. All right, 20-18 William McCain, 252 Sandwich Road.
Sign and pass, please. You can put that in when you get it, please, Carl, for me, so the whole folder's coming. Thank you. Is that you and Wilma?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get one, two, three, four. His four, take one, pass him. Oh, boy, you color.
Bill. Oh, you got it. No, see, that was a little bit.
Everybody signed it?
Wilma's got it, I'm denying it.
Okay. Wilma, your denial?
That's the one.
A big shuffle. Haven't read it yet, but... Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 13, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 20-18 for a special permit slash variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 321, Article 14, Section 1450 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to William McCain, care of GAF Engineering, Inc., 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., 02538, seeking to create a new motor vehicle service establishment located at 252 Sandwich Road, East Wareham, Mass., Assessors Map 129, Lot 1145, in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Name and address for record, let us know what you're doing.
I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering here on behalf of Bill McCain.
Okay.
William McCain, owner, 252 Sandwich Road, Wareham.
All right, let us know what you guys doing.
Before you say anything, I want to talk to this.
She sold it?
She sold it.
She did run it just now? Eighteen years ago.
Eighteen years ago.
Okay, just want to make sure.
All right.
Wanted to make sure we didn't have a conflict, that's all. Thank you, go ahead. Okay, what we're seeking to do is to use the existing garage on the property as an automotive detailing shop. Essentially, that's automotive... Motor vehicle service by the bylaw. It's an allowed use by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that's what prompted us to come before you tonight, seeking authorization for that use. There's a single one-car garage on the property that's going to be used for the facility. There's not going to be any washing of vehicles at the site. It's going to be strictly detailing of the vehicles by appointment only, so we're thinking that there's not going to be really any traffic to be concerned with at the site where people are coming by appointment. We drew a couple of vehicles in there. It does look as though there's adequate space for a couple of cars to be there. One person, say, dropping one off, one, say, picking up the other vehicle, but that's really what the long and short of it is. The aerial image that I gave you just is to give you an idea of what the surrounding uses are in the neighborhood immediately adjacent to the site. There's the Garden Homes Maintenance Facility or Office Building there. Across the street, there's a boat storage facility. There's that former electric warehouse right across the street. Across the street, there are also three residential units or three residential dwellings. The Alx Lodge is shown, the Fan Club. So the area is comprised of, I would say, characterize it as essentially a mixed-use area in the commercial strip zone. So that's what we're here for tonight.
All right. Being a special permit, don't you require like some sort of site plan, kinda?
They gave us something here, I'm sorry.
Oh, there it is.
It's a detail shop.
What's that?
He's got it up on the board there, but yeah, there's another one. I was trying to keep it a secret just to me, but they want to know too. It's what you got on the board, right? Exactly, the same plan. Really wasn't trying to keep it a secret, I just didn't... I failed to hand it out.
Charlie, can you look at it quick, see what do you think?
Yep. Look. Yeah.
So it's a detail shop, you're not washing cars there?
No, we're gonna wash the cars, say, at soft touch car wash and have them delivered up to the facility, and you can do the detailing from that point forward.
It's a little tight, the site. Kenny, what do you think? Do you look at it? Ken?
Yeah, I think they're showing an awful lot of cars. There may not be that many cars if it's by appointment.
What our goal was to illustrate the cars where it's a single-family dwelling there. We wanted to show that there was adequate parking for, say, a couple of cars that would be used by the occupants of the dwelling, and then, say, one in the garage where it would be being detailed, and perhaps another customer coming, say, for their appointed time, just to show there's really an area there to put several vehicles. It's not the intention to have several vehicles there, but simply by appointment only, which is customary for the detailing business.
That's a garage. Existing garage. How big's that garage?
You can get two cars in there, no problem.
Yeah? It's big enough?
Yeah.
All right, Wilma, what do you want to say?
Is that where they used to have some blown up bouncy?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. Just to... I personally wouldn't want my business there with the traffic. There's something on that road just before the summer. I mean, it's... They've had an awful lot of traffic. If it's appointments only and nobody's gonna just drive in and keep a...
Yeah, see, I lived there also, so I really don't want a lot of cars.
You don't want a lot of cars.
I don't want like a parking lot. That's why it's appointment only.
You make a few dollars a week.
Excuse me?
You just want to make a few dollars a week?
Correct.
On your retirement.
Eighteen years ago.
Yes.
I'll ask him.
Thank you.
Kenny, you want to say anything?
Yeah, just to point out that the zoning bylaw allows that more than one principal use and/or structure may be established in non-residential districts, and this being the CS district, it is allowed as a... As a right.
So it's a large use, yeah.
Who owns that driveway between Sandwich Road and 28? That state road or town property?
That's part of the state layout.
State layout, yeah.
So you can't park... That van can't be parked there in front of that house, huh?
In that picture, yeah.
In that picture.
Basically.
When they paved the... Last year when they paved both sides, I asked him, you know, is this that driveway? Are you gonna do anything with that? Are you gonna pave it? Because it's all like potholes. I'll fill some of them myself, and he says, no, it's not in the budget, whatever.
But it's still owned by the state?
Correct.
And you can't park a vehicle on it, so that vehicle's parked illegally there. And if you're gonna have a business, is there any gonna be other vehicles parked there? That vehicle shouldn't be there. There shouldn't be no vehicles there.
And that's why we illustrated on the drawing that there was adequate room on the site to park the vehicles. It just happened to be that the day we took that image, there was someone illegally parked there, correct?
I didn't know. I feel in that picture.
Jake, you want to say anything?
I...
It was here, that's right here. So the home's here and the vehicle's home.
You're gonna be the sole employee? Are you doing all this work yourself, or...?
No, actually, I'm doing this for a young lady that's been in the business for 10 years.
Uh-huh.
And trying to help her get into business.
So how many people will be working in that place? Just you and another lady? Two people?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I live there, so...
Right, so, okay.
Not in the garage, I mean, I'm still...
It's legal.
So let me ask you a question. If she's there cleaning a car and she needs to use the bathroom, will you let her come into your house and use the bathroom?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone... Any audience want to speak in favor of this project? Against? Okay, Charlie, what do you say?
So long as there is adequate room for one or two clients, whatever he's gonna have, plus his employee parking, so that it doesn't spill over into the state highway. It's a very limited area to park anybody.
You're drilling.
So long as...
Can't hear you.
Turn your microphone on.
Sorry about that. So long as there's no spillover into the state layout, and there's room enough for his employee to park, room enough for him to get to a couple of cars out of his own driveway, and there's room enough to work on one or two cars there, if you can limit the number, that's the only concern I would have.
And we would accept that as a condition of approval if the board was so inclined?
So not more than two cars would be parked in there? How's that, from outside, as a client and employee? So you could have two inside and two outside? Would that be good as a condition?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
And not on the state layout?
Correct.
All right, so let's move to closer.
Good eye. Move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Did you want to ask if anybody from the public...
I didn't. No one said nothing.
Okay, I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so wishes?
You know, despite the fact that it is a very tight lot, I think it's a unique use and a decent use, I'm inclined to go ahead and grant him the request. So I'd move in favor. Make a motion to grant.
With any conditions?
Yeah, maximum of two customer cars at a time.
Two customer cars outside, parked outside.
Okay, I was gonna say two period. You know, that could be two inside or two outside, or not two in and two out, that's four. But if you want to make it four, that's okay with me.
I was thinking two outside and two inside.
Okay. So a maximum of no more than four customer cars at any one time?
Between employee and customers.
You can only do...
Do I have a second for that motion?
Could I just ask one question on that?
Yes.
Would it be restricted to detailing only and no servicing of vehicles in any other way?
Car washing? Yeah, we make that condition too.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So can we wash on the cars that are there either?
Can I wash my own car?
How many own cars you have?
I don't see why.
Well, I guess you can. I wash your own car, but the building commissioner, if he feels that you're washing cars, he could put a disease on the project, he could stop you.
Okay.
All right? All right, with this condition, no washing cars and no more than four cars between inside and outside. So two in the garage and two outside. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. All right, Wilma, you're on? You yes or no?
Aye, abstain.
Abstain? Okay, so 4-0-1, a carriage, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
What do we grant? A variance or a special permit? Yeah, okay. Certainly not detrimental.
Conditioned cars, all right, two in the garage, two outside, no car washing?
Yep, I got it.
All right, files, please. Give them one. All right, last one. 21-18 Pharma... Pharmasanis?
Pharmecanis.
Pharmecanis, Mass., Inc., 112 Main Street. Come forward, please. Give us just a minute.
Oh, we want to put these in there too, don't we? That was... He gave us that. Yep. Everybody to the left signed. Oh, I see it down there. Jen's got it. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. The last one for that... For that folder. Two, three, four. Here's four for the next one. Two, here's two for the... This is for the next one. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 13th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571, to consider petition number twenty-one dash eighteen for a special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Pharmacanis, Massachusetts, Inc., DBA, VeriLife, 112 Main Street, PO Box 391, Wareham, Mass, seeking to establish a medical marijuana retail establishment located at 112 Main Street, Wareham, Mass, assesses MAP 47 Lot 1119 in the IS zoning district. I didn't realize that was IS.
Institutional.
Yeah.
All right, very well. Name and address for the record. And last note, what are you doing?
Shelley Stormo. Business address is one... Do you want my residential address or business?
Yeah, residential address.
Okay. Thirty-six Winding Way, Plymouth, Massachusetts, 02360. And we are seeking a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to operate a retail marijuana dispensary.
So you want to do the medical and the retail in this plan? Okay. Your name?
Sure. Matt Levine, Director of New Markets with Pharmacan. I live in... I live at 1728 North Fremont Street in Chicago, Illinois.
You're gonna travel every day?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna travel every day?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Commute?
I am from here. I did grow up in the Boston area. My mom just lives a half hour from here, so it's good coming back.
Andy Nusafaro. I'm an attorney. I represent Pharmacanis. My residential address is 985 West Street, Pittsfield, Mass.
All right. So this is new to us, so why don't you like...
Sure.
I know you want to sell marijuana retail and for medicine purpose, right?
Sure. So thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity today. We'll be brief, obviously, the hour is late, and I think what we're, you know, here is pretty straightforward today. So the company Pharmacan, and we're operating the VeriLife Medical Cannabis Dispensary right now here at 112 North... 112 North Main Street in Wareham. We were operating here in Massachusetts, and we are operating a total of eight other dispensaries across multiple states. We will double that footprint, more than double that footprint, by the end of next year, building out here in Massachusetts and other highly regulated states like Massachusetts. I'll let Shelley speak to just that a little bit more, so you guys have a sense of who we are as a company and also what we've done here in Wareham. Like has been touched on, we... And I'll defer to Shelley, who really leads our effort here on the ground, but we have been... Our medical cannabis dispensary has been open at 112 Main Street, and what we're seeking here today is we're not seeking any change... Any physical change to the structure, exterior or interior. What we're asking here for today is a byright use, which with the special permit, under Wareham's amended Wareham zoning bylaws, to operate as an adult-use dispensary. We are currently operating... We're currently operating a properly zoned and licensed, both at the state and local level, a medical marijuana dispensary, which is in the institutional zoning district, as was previously mentioned. We've worked step by step with several members of the town to get to this point, which, again, we're incredibly thankful and appreciative of all the support we've received. For instance, we're currently going through the process of obtaining our certificate of appropriateness with the historical district commission. We're up before them at the end of the month to do some minor work to... Minor exterior work to the building, which will just make it prettier. That's coming up at the end of the month. Again, our request today involves no physical change to the facility. We're simply... We're simply asking for what's provided for in the zoning Wareham pass for adult use as dispensaries, as long as we're instringent compliant with all local and state laws and regulations that we should be able to operate our current dispensary as an adult-use dispensary as was voted in by locally here, Wareham, and the state of Massachusetts. So I'll let Shelley just give a little bit more about our company and what we've done locally here.
If I may first, did you get... Did they go to selectmen and get...
Yes, they did. And they got their host community agreement.
Oh, okay. And they have a business plan and all that?
And they had a business plan as well.
All right, go ahead.
So in 2016, we approached the owners of 112 Main Street and put together money to purchase that building. So we've been working... I personally have been working five years in the state of Massachusetts to open a medical marijuana dispensary. So two weeks ago, when we were open and we're able to serve the patients of Wareham and the surrounding areas, it's been amazing. Our patients are wonderful, and we've seen probably an average of 20 patients a day. And they come, you know, one or two kind of sporadically throughout the day. We are open 10 to 6, Tuesday through Saturday, and we have really enjoyed working with the town, and we are hoping... We've gotten a lot of questions from community members through social media and other avenues whether we will be able to open for adult use. And we have applied to the Cannabis Control Commission under the priority application status for our adult-use retail license in Wareham. So we are intending and hoping to serve the local community and add retail adult use to our medical cannabis dispensary.
And just to hit, if it would be helpful for the board, just to hit a few of the specifics that, you know, just want to make sure we check the boxes here, that we're, again, we're permitted under state laws and regulations. As Shelley just mentioned, we've been through, you know, multiple inspections, both what we've submitted to the state in writing and then them actually coming multiple times to our site. So have passed multiple inspections on the medical side, and we are one of the... Thanks to the help of folks here in Wareham, we are one of the first in, as Shelley mentioned, to apply for the adult use. Those are expected to come soon. It goes without saying that we wouldn't do anything on the adult use side until we get that full clearance from the state. We're in the institutional zoning district meeting, and we meet all dimensional intensity and setback requirements. We would be the first marijuana retailer here in the town, so we're not within 1,500 feet of any other one. We've conformed with state regulations and licensing requirements for such establishments regarding buffers, access, and security. As I said, we've been through multiple inspections on that front by the state. Happy to provide any insight on that. Our signage is conformant... Is in conformance with local and state rules. So I just wanted to, you know, get that out, just that some of that was boilerplate, but just wanted to get it on the record. And if it would be helpful, I think Shelley just could, you know, show some quick pictures that we brought to just kind of show you guys exactly what we're talking about at the site. That would be helpful.
All right. Just let me ask. Don't they... Do they need a parking plan, site plan?
They have a pot plan.
I mean, do they need a parking plan, drain it, or this, or is it existing?
No, this is really a special permit for the use.
Just the use?
Just the use.
Okay, and if we grant it, what, they're gonna come back for site plan?
No, they don't need it.
No, they don't need site plan.
They don't?
It's an existing use.
What do you think, Charlie?
I don't know how to respond to it. It's the first time I've heard it, so it's not considered a change in use from what it was before? It has more than 10 spaces?
It has 13 spaces currently.
Okay, but the bylaw says that 10 spaces irrespective of how many may be there now. But my question is, site plan review takes place if you have a change in use. What was the use prior to this use that you presently have?
It was a medical building.
What was the previous use for that building?
It was medical, wasn't it?
So we have...
The existing use is medical marijuana.
We have our permit for the use with the town.
The use before... The use before that it's currently... So it's currently a medical marijuana dispensary.
Okay. And you wouldn't consider the sales aspect of it for adult use a change of use?
No, no, we wouldn't. And again, this is just what we're... Just going by the zoning bylaws and the amendment that was passed to address marijuana establishments.
What we plan to... It's not... We're not arguing the use. We're arguing, let's say, now you're gonna do retail, so you're gonna have more traffic, more parking.
No, but you were answering Mr. Rowley's question right, which was going to whether or not site plan review is required, that analysis, and in particular whether a change of use is happening here where you're adding retail sales to medical marijuana sales. I would say no, personally, but...
Now, that's where I was getting at. And we do have... So we have 13 spots onsite, and just for, you know, a point of comparison, a... The medical cannabis dispensary in the town of Brookline Neta, I don't know if you've heard of that organization, one of the busiest dispensaries in the state, and they have 10 spots there and are seeing no issues in terms of traffic. There's other... And we're already like... We already have alternative options for employee parking, so, you know, we've really vetted the parking situation closely. It's a bad... It's a bad situation for our business, for our patients, for the town if we can't handle the parking easily. We've learned that the hard way in other states and have improved, you know, since over three years ago when we opened our first store. So we're very sensitive to the issue.
All right, if I may, Mr. Titlebaum, want to come forward?
He goes. They got it. When do you expect a determination from the state? When do you expect a determination from the state on your...
They initially estimated they would start awarding licenses July 1st or before July 1st, so people could open on July 1st, but I don't... There's been some setbacks, so I don't believe that they're gonna hit that target, but...
All right.
Somewhere around there.
Mr. Titlebaum.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the issue...
Just your name for the record.
Peter Titlebaum, member of Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to speak to the issue of site plan review here. To my way of thinking, they do have... Even though the use presently is for the medicinal sale of marijuana, nonetheless, it's still the sale of marijuana. If we take the word medicinal out, you're talking sale. If you talk sale, you're essentially... It's retail nonetheless. It's just a limited retail, if you will, in the sense that somebody needs a medical marijuana card to be able to go in and buy it. No... In some ways, no different than a package store, an 18-year-old kid can't go in and buy there. So it's a restricted sale of an item. You've already got commercial activity going on there. You've already got a retail activity, if you will. I don't see the use becoming that much more intense in that area with this. I'm sure they would love to have that problem, but I don't see that where they are... There aren't other retail businesses around that would be impacted. You've got a Bessie Park across the street. You've got that dirt lot that I don't even know who the heck owns and everybody uses for everything over in Bessie Park. So to the extent that somebody pulls into the parking lot and says, "Oh, shoot, I can't park," they're just gonna go in the dirt lot like we all do. So I don't really think that in this instance, site plan review over issues like parking is really needed.
You don't think it would create traffic? I mean, like a lot more than it is now?
No, I don't think you would see much more traffic than you would see at a liquor store on Friday night.
Okay, thank you.
What's their normal stay?
Their average stay on their first visit's a little bit longer. So on their first visit, our average patient is 55 and up.
All right, that's for the patient, but what about the adult use?
Oh, for adult use, the average stay will be even quicker. So for medical use, the average stay, I would say, is 10 to 20 minutes. For adult use, we're anticipating getting people in and out a lot faster.
So you get 20 clients a day right now, roughly, medical?
That's correct.
What do you think you're gonna get for adult?
I mean, even if we tripled that, so let's say... So starting in July, we're gonna be delivering to our medical patients for a lot of reasons. So that kind of takes them out of the equation, because we'll be actually delivering to them to make it a little more convenient. But, you know, say we had 60 patients a day. We're open 10 to 6. You know, we're really not seeing any patients clustered in any given time, so I believe it'll be steady throughout the day. People coming, you know, staying 10 minutes and then leaving the parking lot, so...
So... Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I did want to say the delivery aspect for the medicinal, which they can do now. The state is in the process of figuring out how they're gonna regulate the delivery aspect, but that is part of what the Cannabis Control Commission is working on now, and I think November was their target date?
Correct.
If I remember correctly, for setting up retail delivery, so...
The Good Humor Truck.
It's gonna... Yeah, it's gonna be the Good Humor Truck, or the Good Humor Truck is gonna follow the retail delivery. Maybe that's the way it's gonna work.
So if it's over and out, if it's over and out, they'll have a medical card that's delivering. So the person that's delivering is gonna have to have a medical card also then?
Well, we have agent cards through the state.
So they're saying they're exempt?
Through the state of Massachusetts for medical transportation, yes.
What can they be in possession of?
I mean...
Only what's manifested. You mean... You mean the delivery driver?
Curry.
Two delivery... Yeah, there's two... The state requires two delivery drivers, and they have to have a manifest of what is... Of what they're bringing to the patient on them.
Let's stick with the site. We don't care how you sell it or what's the procedures. So Charlie, do you think we should have some sort of site plan?
No, I was just inquiring as to whether or not it was a change in use that would trigger that. If it doesn't require it, the only other question I have is how wide is that current driveway? Because if you're gonna have parking in and out, can people get in while they're going out? Is it wide enough to make turns off of Main Street?
So what we've had is... What we had in the beginning when we opened is medical, was a parking... A security agent there onsite who was able to direct traffic and, you know, help people come in and out safely. We have not found that we need that on a continual basis at this point, so we would do the same thing when adult use hits and provide somebody onsite that's able to direct, you know, say there was... We have not had any situation with people coming in or out of that driveway.
The driveway?
Yeah. You can't miss it. Mr. Chairman, that didn't answer my question as to how wide the driveway was.
Yeah, his question was more along the lines of, is the driveway wide enough to accommodate traffic coming in and traffic coming out?
I don't know.
How wide is the driveway? Do you know?
I don't know how... What the... Why the driveway is offhand.
It's probably 10 feet, but I can't see a change in that... The district, the area over there, you stop messing with that, you're stopping messing with the whole stick history.
If I may, you're going to the historic... If I may, you're going to the historic history commission for a permit to widen the driveway. I mean, you go there if you want to change a shingle, so...
And you might not be able... You might not have property on each side that you can widen.
Exactly.
So I think that's... That's not our issue.
It's no wide... Excuse me. It's no wider than the driveway that leads into the lab... The lab, medical lab, and you have to watch how it's going in and out.
The building next door? The building next door, you're saying?
The one that's right next door.
Bob, you getting this all all right?
I hope so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So, but I know that, because I go to the medical lab, and it's, the driveway next door is the same, they're all the same.
That's got a good point on the driveway, and it could be made wider by taking this island out, unless that's part of the house.
All right, Kenny, what do you recommend? What do you think of the site? I'm concerned in the site, and traffic and stuff like this. I mean, they could sell what they want. What do you think?
I think you should see what happens.
What?
I think you should, should allow the, the use to proceed in...
The six months coming back.
With the condition that they come back if there's conflict with traffic.
Let me ask a question.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I mean, if, if...
Do you know if there's parking on the street, on Main Street, you face Main Street?
No.
Is there parking on the street there?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not marked out, though.
I never seen anybody.
There's no, across from Bessie Park, you can, you can park on the street.
There's nothing, there's no markings.
There's no markings, but I don't believe it's posted, no parking.
All right, would you be okay if, I hope, I guess you'd be okay if you get so busy, come back to do some more, something about the traffic and the driveway?
Absolutely.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, could, could I ask a question? This has nothing to do with engineering, design, or anything. So, this is strictly a personal question. Does your board have the authority to grant a special permit for use that the state has not given them a license for at this point?
I guess, yeah, we could grant...
Or would you have to condition the grant that they receive it before they can begin?
I mean, if we grant it, I, I, I'm sure we can grant any special permit, but if they don't get the state, it's useless.
I'm just curious as to the procedure, how you do that when you're, they're asking you to grant them a special permit for something that the state hasn't authorized or licensed for them to do, that's all.
The, the way I look at it, let's say we grant them a special permit to run the liquor store, if they don't get it from the state, it's useless, but it's their loss.
Just a procedural question?
Yeah, I understand. It's new to me, too, but I'm, I'm just, it makes sense. I mean, if they don't have a state license, they can't operate.
That's essentially it. You know, if they can go forward at the local level and receive all necessary agreements and permits, and if they proceed to operate without the state license, they do so at their own peril, which is jail time.
I don't think that can.
Yeah.
I'm sure they wouldn't want to risk losing the license if they have it.
Exactly.
Right.
I still have another question.
Go ahead, Drew.
So, earlier, did I hear you say that you actually purchased the real estate? You own the, the building now?
I personally don't, but family members do, yes.
Okay, so, fine, I could buy a house and rent it to my daughter, but I still own the house. I got you, okay. So, and I'm looking at this plot plan here, and it appears that the driveway, the parking lot's behind the building. It's the big white building with the columns, across from Bessie Park.
Correct.
I'm only saying that for anybody that might not know what we're talking about.
You have some neighbors.
You don't need to show the picture. If I say the big white building with the columns, everybody knows what it is.
Okay.
I, I would, I would hope. And, and your parking lot is behind the building?
Correct.
And the driveway into your parking lot is through your neighbor's yard?
Correct, we have an easement for that.
You have an easement in your deed, et cetera. And then, from the edge of that entrance, that driveway into your back parking lot, to your building, is adequate, it appears on this plan, unpaved, that could be removed and become a second lane, so one car could come in and one car could go out?
Correct.
Does it make sense that maybe that should happen?
Well, they have to go to Historic right now.
Okay. The Hysterical Society needs to agree. Okay. All right, I just, those are my questions, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All we do, we make a condition. If it gets, if we, if we feel the traffic is getting crazy, which they hope to, they have to come back and do some widening for the driveway and go before the Historic Commission and all that. We could condition this, right?
Yes.
Say we make a number of cars, like more...
There's a solution to the, you know, I, I get the concern of, I mean, twenty customers a day selling party, you kidding me? I know guys that stand on the corner that do more business than that. So, let's not kid ourselves, there's going to be traffic. You're the first and only one in Wareham, you're legal. So, I'm just wondering, you know, can they park on the street? Can they park at Bessie Park? They can't consume the product on premise, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, they're going to want to be in and out as fast as possible. They're going to be anxious to leave. Okay. I'm concerned about, I, I think a good point has been brought up about that driveway into your back parking lot, and whether we grant or deny, or whatever we do tonight, I think you guys in the future want to look at dealing with the historians.
And we are on some other issues at the end of this month, so...
That's, that's, how, we need to move forward. We've got a whole bunch of other people sitting patiently for the issues. That's the end of my comments.
All right.
Good.
Anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this project?
Chairman, we do have some folks in the audience, I think, who would speak in favor, but for the sake of time, we can reserve that.
Yeah, okay, very good. But, against?
Board of Selectmen are very much in favor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to speak against? I hear none, let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close public hearing?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. So, okay, what do you guys want to do?
Mostly grant as, as presented.
Any, any discussion on that? Okay, what's the conditions?
I don't know, you guys tell me, I just want to...
I would say if traffic is, if we feel, if the commissioner feel that's more than sixty cars a day in and out, we should, they should come back for a site plan. Is that fair enough, sixty cars? Sixty trips?
Charlie, you looking?
That's rather arbitrary, but...
See, I think that's a little arbitrary.
Somebody's got to, there's got to be some barometer. I understand Nazzie's point.
It's a, it's a shared driveway, correct?
No.
No, it's a private driveway.
No, is it for the other building also?
No, it is not.
They got the exclusive use of it.
Charlie, how would you word that?
Just a couple of, just a couple of suggestions. One, that they come back if you receive complaints with respect to traffic, or, and/or that they automatically come back within six months or a year from the date that they begin to let you know how things are going.
We, yeah, we, we like, we like that idea, coming back in maybe twelve months as a, you know, just to check in.
Okay, so why don't we make a condition?
Six-month, six-month return, or one year?
Yeah, for review. So, within a year, you apply for review, we come back, we'll see if we heard any complaints, traffic, we'll see how it looks. I mean, I live close by, I'll see it.
Okay.
So, it's Jim, so I'll call, everybody will see it, so we'll see if there's an issue. So, one-year review.
Do you want, do you want to have any clause to accelerate the review if there's an obvious traffic problem?
We, I want to accelerate this meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
When you end it, I'm good.
All right, one-year review. So, that's a motion by Jim with the, to grant as presented with one-year review. Have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. There you go, you get your first license.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mike here for mine and have? Good, he's not.
This is for a continuance.
Okay, good. So, continue public hearing, four dash eighteen for Mike.
I haven't known the twenty-seventh. I wasn't going to be here on the twenty-seventh, I think he knows that.
All right, so seventy-two mine and have, why don't we continue till, till, till June eleven?
July.
I think so.
Which one is that, that will continue here?
Close that door. Hey, Ben, close that door, please, thank you. So, seventy-two mine and have, four dash eighteen, let's make a motion to continue to June eleven, July eleven. All right, July eleven, do I make a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second to continue, four eighteen, Jen, Carl?
Second.
Second by Carl to Ju, to July eleven.
Continued public hearings, a, Jen, we're going to continue it.
Seventy-two mine and have to July eleven.
I think we got the majority.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. All right, very well, and there goes the big one, two dash eighteen, Dakota Partners, thirty-one oh two Cranberry Highway. Yeah, Mr. Freeman, where's Mr. Freeman?
Hi.
Okay, that's the big one. Yeah, I got it, but you can give it to others.
We got to put it in the, we got to...
All right, thank you. All right, on this matter, petition two dash eighteen, Dakota Partners, thirty-one oh two Cranberry Highway, public hearing still open.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things I'd like to say before we go into the meeting.
All right, sure, go ahead.
Okay. There's been a few things that haven't been brought up pertaining to this. First of all, we do not have a report from the fire department on what they have to comment on the buildings. Second, I think that the, they should have a layout for a, for the playgrounds, and also for a basketball court, because there's no place around for these kids to go and play basketball. And third, the, I'm hoping that sidewalks will be put in, because there's nothing, and I see people walking along the side of the road, and those are adults, and they're getting hit, never mind children that will walk down to the, the food, fast food places that are down the road, because there's nothing close except Seven-Eleven. And I just want them to be considered in anything that comes up, that's all.
Thank you. You know, we'll certainly take everything under consideration. I think on the fire department, or fire chief...
Just the name for the records, please.
I'm sorry, Peter Freeman, attorney for the applicant, and also with me, Dom Rinaldi. Also for the record, our applicant, Jim O'Brien, is not here, unfortunately. He got quite ill, and not sure when he'll be back, but in any case, and the principal of, of Dakota, Roberto Arista, who was here at the first hearing, was going to come, but his flight back from out of town was delayed, so it's the two of us tonight. In any case, Dom, did you think that Jim was in the process with the fire department and, you know, with his illness the end of the week? So, either way, we'll certainly follow up, but do you have any further info on that?
Yes, yeah, Dominic Rinaldi with BSC Group. My understanding is that Jim O'Brien has been talking to the fire department. We prepared a plan with Fire Department movements for him to go and, and meet with them. I don't know if that meeting happened. It was about a week and a half ago that, that he and I were talking about that, so I don't know if he managed to schedule that before, before his ailment.
All right, what did we leave this, the whole thing last time? What did we leave, what did we left to that?
Well, in a nutshell, if I may, again, Peter Freeman, we, we were waiting both the approval of selection of peer review consultants and the scope, all of which was agreed to, and then we were hoping that there would be some peer review reports in time for us to review and discuss tonight, and there have now been, but we only received them very late in the day, so our traffic expert isn't here, because there was no time for her to respond. Certainly, we will at, at the next hearing. There has been a traffic review by the agreed-to peer review consultant, and so, thank you for sending it, and, you know, it, it was dated May thirty-first, which seems strange, we didn't get it till today. I don't know what, when you got it, Ken?
Well, that was a draft.
It was a draft, okay.
The final came in today.
Okay. In any event, so, as I said, that, that's fine. And likewise, there was a report from OSD on the water that came in, I think literally when I was on my way here. So, same situation, we're certainly, we'll certainly be prepared to discuss that. I think they were both really very favorable, but I don't want to speak off the cuff, and of course, you know, Dom is, is our expert, he has barely had a chance to read the OSD letter. So, in a nutshell, we, we had presented some revisions in terms of the phasing and responsive, we thought, to the concerns the board had raised at the hearing previous to the last hearing. So, you know, we're ready, willing, and able, but I think really at the next hearing to have a further, more enlightened discussion on those areas, and the one other thing that, you know, we don't have yet, and I don't think the town has it yet, is the peer review report on the sewer. So, obviously, that's something that we're all looking forward to getting, and hopefully, that would be available enough before the next hearing for all of us to review. And I don't really think we have anything else to report, because that's the status. We were, we were waiting from the peer review, certainly, you know, comments that were just made, we'll take to heart and see what we can do, and that's part of the give and take. If there are other comments or suggestions, you know, we're certainly open to that tonight, but beyond that, unless there's anything else by way of any revisions or anything, Dom, that you think I've forgotten, that's really where we're at.
We do have somebody, Mr. Campino, guy, you want, we have the superintendent for the sewer. Do you have anything you want to say? I guess you're here for, tonight for that matter, aren't you? Or were you here for something else?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm here. I'm here, if there's any questions about the sewer matter.
Okay.
We've had some discussions, there's been some reports back and forth. Nothing has been finalized, but generally speaking, there's some conditions that we'd like to see moving forward, and we've discussed those. And so, I'm here, if the board has any direct questions, any confusions, I'll definitely clarify them, and answer any question the board may have.
All right, unless we, until we have bases, so we'll discuss conditions some other time, because we still don't have a base which way we're heading. So, but, thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And Ben, from the water department, is he here, or he left? Oh, Ben?
He's Ben.
All right, what, what do you, what do you, where are you from last time?
Ben Hughes, Ben Hughes, Onset Water Department Chair.
You might have to...
That turned out, Ben?
Ben, push the green button.
Try this one. We'll try this one.
Hi, hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Ben Hughes, Chair, Onset Water Department. So, we do have our review from Sean Osborne, OSD Engineering Consultants. It looks favorable for these gentlemen here, with certain conditions, one of them being monitoring wells. And, Ken, you do have this...
Yes. Monitoring wells that Charlie, like, requested last time to require the...
Yes, yes, exactly.
There's any leaks or anything?
They are within the Zone Two, so, the, the hydrology underground, the groundwater underground is most likely flowing toward our Zone Two wells, so we would like to make a base, like...
Which way the water flows, Charlie, goes towards the, does it go towards the ocean or goes towards the water department?
In this particular case, because... In this particular case, because the wells are close enough, I suspect that there is a, enough of a drawdown, a hydraulic drawdown from those wells, that it probably flows in the direction of sand pond as well as the wellfield itself.
All right, so you, your only concern and conditions would be to have monitoring wells?
Yeah, there, well, there's, there's several here.
Can you go with Tom, correct?
Let me just go through this.
You have the copy of this letter in your, in your folders.
Okay, go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. So, it says, "Using the average day, maximum day, and fire flow demands provided by BSC Group, the impact of the development on the onset fire district's water distribution system was simulated using a hydraulic model. Our analysis concluded that the current distribution system can meet the proposed demands with no significant impact on the district's existing customers except for when the wells are operational." And we have an issue with generators there. At the moment, well seven is the only well that has a backup generator that is functional. From there on, it goes, "To mitigate the potential for contamination of the OFD water source, we recommend that the developer institute guidelines for the residents and landscapers to prohibit the use of pesticides and limit the storage of fuel oil at the residences. Due to the potential for debris, pet waste, and chemicals, and storm water from roads, parking lots, and lawns to get into the infiltration systems, we recommend that the proponent develop and provide a permanent well monitoring plan." And this is something I strongly advise, is something I would like to see, and I strongly advise. "Installing monitoring wells north or and adjacent to the project site prior to construction. Monthly collection and analysis of water quality samples, electronic and paper copies of test results to be, to be provided to onset fire district water department and town of Wareham planning office." Then it goes from there. Plans sheet C five point one, Phase One water main should include a minimum of two hydrants. One should be installed on the Woodland Cove property between Redbrook Road and Building A. The other should be installed at the dead end with one full length of pipe and a restrained cap after the dead end hydrant. If possible, move the underground infiltration system installed in Phase One out of the R-130 zone." And this is something Mr. Osborne highlighted to me on my conversation with him today down from Boston, when I had business today in Boston. Sheet C five point two, Phase Two water main should include a minimum of two hydrants. One should be installed on the Woodland Cove property between Cranberry Highway and Building F. The other should be installed at the dead end with one full length of pipe and a restrained cap after the dead end hydrant. Sheet C dash six point two, water service connection detail, OFD requests that all new pipe be DI. B, service tab should be shown at ten or two o'clock. C, service pipe should be PE service tubing. Sheet C dash six point three, concrete thrust block for pressure pipe. All water main bends, dead ends, and Ts shall have mechanical joints with retainer glands. Point B, a minimum of one pipe to pipe joint shall be mechanically restrained before and after all water main fittings. And then, sheet C dash six point four, fire hydrant and valve. Hydrants to be painted onset fire district red with Scotch light reflective paint. B, and note for hydrants installed at dead ends of water main to install valves with restrained joints on both sides of the hydrant T, and one full length pipe between valve and mechanically restrained cap or plug. Otherwise, it appears we have no issues.
All right, thanks, Ben. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, we have, did you get a tech, I'm holding, thanks, the traffic studies with tech engineering?
Yes, we got that today.
All right, I want to give the floor to Mr. Dan Drake, right?
Yes.
And he did some, we get some consultant from them, so we want to hear from him. Just your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Board. My name is Kevin Dandrade. I'm a principal of TEC. We're a consulting engineering firm, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to do our first review of the town of Wareham. As part of background for the board, I'm a professional engineer, professional traffic operations engineer. We perform, perform a lot of municipal peer review services, but we also do private work as well. We've worked on dozens of... We've worked on dozens of 40B projects, both for the applicant and for municipalities. Most recently, we've done some reviews for the City of Methuen, Town of Wayland, and other communities, in looking at projects of comparable scale. We did a peer review of the McMahon Report that's dated from November of '17, the BSC Group site plans. And we have a series of comments that we outlined. There was a draft that was issued in this afternoon, and I apologize for minor communication lapse, that the final version did get issued this afternoon to Mr. Buckland and forwarded to the paralegal for the applicant's attorney. Letters dated June 6th, the one that was the final version, there were minor changes from the draft version, really just in a couple typos and some numbering of the comments. But if I could just walk through quickly to give you a sense for the types of things that we're looking at. In general, the traffic study was professionally prepared. It's more or less a standard format for what we would normally see, for how the data is collected, how it's projected into the future. It's more or less consistent with Mastot's requirements. We didn't see evidence of coordination with Mastot yet, but that's something that ultimately the applicant will be required to do as part of a state highway access permit to Route 6 and 28. But overall, and also in coordination with town comments, the study area is okay. I think that knowing that they sit at this large intersection between Route 6 and 28 and Red Brook Road, and knowing that Mastot's about to embark on a large reconstruction project, which more or less provides capacity and safety improvements along the state highway. As far as traffic counts, the way they were collected and adjusted, they did it over a couple different time periods between January and May of last year. But the way they projected them to account for a more conservative look based on just the raw data is consistent with what we would do for our own studies. The number of trips that would be generated, you know, both in and out of the facility, was looked at both in the morning and evening peak commuter hours. Again, that's consistent with what we would normally see. And the level of activity is a sum of the access and egress movements at both driveways would be somewhere in the order of 90 to 110 per hour. So, that's the sum of all movements from all directions in and out. The distribution was based on US Census data, so a lot of these things are just confirming what they've done to date. Capacity and queue analysis, looking at the operations of that state highway intersection. And again, this is something that Mastot would need to confirm, but as you probably already are aware, there's a very heavy left turn movement from Route 6, 28 eastbound onto Red Brook Road, particularly in the evening peak hour. That presents the need to look very closely at the operations themselves, the driveway operations, because although the numbers have been generated correctly, and we agree with that general distribution of traffic, there are some operational considerations that the board should carefully review as it affects access to not only state highway but to the town roadway. The site driveways themselves, right now, they're looking to have a full access driveway onto Red Brook Road. And because of the median that Mastot will be building and reconstructing here, this driveway onto Route 6 and 28 will be essentially right in and right out. With this full access driveway onto Red Brook Road, and knowing that a lot of the traffic is to and from the west, right now, they, it's, although it's not built yet, this opportunity for U-turn movement is what is part of Mastot's plan. But as this is not restricted in the current plan, we're concerned that with that heavy left turn movement, if somebody heading into the development, one of the new prospective residents, turns left and then seeks to take a left into this driveway, that presents a challenge for queuing up traffic behind it. That volume that's taking that left turn is somewhere in the order of 550 to 600 vehicles an hour when you project into the future. So, that's a significant volume where if there's a single car that's blocked at this location, can very, very quickly queue up into the proposed signalized intersection. That's something that should be reviewed. It doesn't mean that there aren't other options, because that traffic that's entering the facility, if there were any access restrictions here that the board may consider, could still perform a U-turn move and turn right into this driveway. Site distance wise for driveway operations, we don't see any issues with this driveway on Route 6 and 28. And we've just asked that they confirm sightlines looking to the east along Red Brook Road, just to confirm that none of the fencing that's there at the property line or other trees and bushes, whether it's on the subject property or the adjacent property, would impact those sightlines based on the criteria. As far as pedestrian access, knowing that it's not just going to be cars but pedestrians, and I think somebody had the comment about that at the opening of this evening's hearing, there's only one proposed sidewalk right now on the Route 6 and 28 driveway. Because of the site's orientation at this corner of this busy intersection, we'd recommend that there be sidewalks on both sides of both driveways, and it's really to reduce the potential for those future residents of having to cross the driveway at its throat where it's busiest. So, essentially, if you live in these few buildings here and you want to walk towards town, well, you can head down this driveway and to the west without needing to cross the driveway. If you're trying to get from 7-Eleven and into the site, there would be a new signalized pedestrian crossing that Mastot would be building. And again, depending on where you're going, you could come up to the Red Brook Road driveway, not need to cross here, but maybe head into the site where things are calmer, safer, et cetera. Or if you're going to these buildings likewise, get into the site without having to cross where it's busiest. As far as the recreation space, looking at its orientation, you know, essentially in the middle of this parking field, looking at opportunities to calm traffic entering the site. So, these driveways right here, it's actually good design in this stretch right here to have a throat where there's no activity. It's uninterrupted, but this crossing here or having a similar crossing right here that could be matched with some sort of a traffic calming device like a raised crosswalk, that's something that would naturally slow traffic down. That might affect some drainage, you know, for where catch basins are, but something that should be explored. As far as the parking ratio for the 176 units, it may be underparked, particularly in the suburban atmosphere. If we're talking about a more urbanized setting, then the types of ratios that are proposed are certainly adequate. But knowing that we're not in an area that has extensive bus service or walkable, bikeable destinations other than a convenience store or other things that select few may choose to do, we believe that it's more appropriate to have something that would be consistent with ITE's parking generation data that would be closer to 2 per unit rather than the 1.5 per unit. When we're talking about the site layout itself, we have a number of site plan characteristics, comments that the board should consider. Some of this may require some more or less alternatives analysis to look at whether or not the board feels that that open space makes more sense to be contiguous with other open space behind it, you know, whether it makes sense to put that type of recreational use behind the structures and not within the parking field. Other aspects about, you know, onsite traffic control, and I would never suggest stop signs or lines everywhere on the site, but there may be certain conflict points where there's unique geometry. And again, the geometry is not necessarily a concern as long as it can accommodate fire apparatus and delivery trucks. Certain elements of that, you know, I think it's a fairly standard parking layout, given where they position buildings. But I think one thing that I think is critically important is what's already been requested about coordination with the fire department. With most of the 40B projects or dense residential projects in general, even if they're not 40B, looking at fire or emergency vehicle access to more than a singular side is usually a high safety criteria to meet. I've provided some examples to Mr. Buckland for what we've seen in other communities where they either have three or four-sided access for trying to get a fire truck around. It's something that I think should be carefully reviewed in the context of the site layout. In general, I think that if matched with other traffic calming devices on the site or other signs, I think that the parking lot in this arrangement could be acceptable, but I think it is a little bit underparked for 176 units. One of the aspects that could change that a little bit too is what we're seeing more and more in the age of Amazon deliveries, that the prevalence of UPS or FedEx with a project with the size of 176 units would have constant deliveries multiple times per day where you really need a special place, and it doesn't have to be a huge place, but a space where a delivery vehicle like that can park for an extended period and make many, many deliveries. So, it's something we're seeing as a recommended practice, although it may not be in anybody's zoning requirements, but it's liken, liking it to a loading zone for commercial use where it's highly predictable that that need would be there. So, I think if, you know, we hear more of the coordination between the applicant's team and the fire department, that could potentially have a way of reshaping the site in a more global fashion. I'm curious to hear what that dialogue is like, but I just offer some guidance for what we've seen in other communities. But having truck turn templates, whether it's for the fire apparatus from Onset Fire, delivery trucks, et cetera, it's something that these guys can pretty routinely do for showing that truck sweep in and around the site in both directions. That's a summary of our comments. And I think there's, you know, workable solutions to many of these things, but particularly taking a very close look at what that driveway operation is like, the pedestrian operations, and some of those other service and emergency vehicle considerations.
All right. Thank you. I would, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Dandrade. I would like to give the floor to Mr. Samuel from the, from the planning board. He wants to say some comments. Do you want to come forward, Sam?
Thank you. My name's Emmanuel Daskalakis, number of the planning board, 66 Tohe Road, Wareham. The planning board has reviewed the plan, and they have some comments that I'd like to present on their behalf.
Okay.
But I have to stand up.
All right. Good.
In looking at, in looking at the site plan, we thought, how do you word this? Thank you. The technology's getting away from me. Okay. In looking at the plan, the, the planning board feels that the site is a little, is overcrowded. The two main points we would like to ask the applicant to consider is that the... We feel that the parking, the driveways and parking between the buildings and the recreation area cause a condition of concern for safety and also separate the residential environments from what would be their front yard or their, or their garden. And we felt that we should look at perhaps having the driving and parking on the outside of the property, moving the buildings inward, and also regarding the size of the buildings. And we realize they're schematic phases still. However, about 160 feet long rectangular structures, even though they are articulated in the facades, this, this is a four-story structure. It's quite large, and we're concerned about the scale as it relates to the environment around the, this particular site, where you have smaller structures. So, how these will relate to the surrounding environment is also a concern. What we show here is the residences articulated somewhat less, in smaller blocks rather than one uniformly long building. But primarily, now the cars, all the traffic is on the perimeter. The residences are now in the same area as their recreational area, making it much safer for children to run out of the house to go play. You just walk out of your front door and you're in your garden, as opposed to... You're having to cross a lot of parked cars. And I have a personal issue with this. My three-year-old grandson ran away from my hand when I was going to stop and shop, and by God's grace, I grabbed him just before a car backed out and would have hit him. A four, or three or four-foot tall child, it is difficult to be seen by a driver backing up. And the planning board feels that there's too much opportunity here. Child running out to play, crossing, the parent would have to take him by hand. You can't let him, cannot let them go by themselves. And the other problem, the other issue that we felt should be considered is that... You sabotaging me with this?
Did the battery die? I don't know.
Maybe. Oh, there it goes. We would ask that the, that the, these are the same length, these are the same length as these.
Right.
But we like, we think they should be articulated so that they, they're somewhat reminiscent of the scale of the surrounding environment. And rather than seeing the four-story units as 160 feet long by, you know, by, by 50 feet high, perhaps the four-story unit could be broken so that you have an articulation that's horizontal as well as vertical, creating a much more sympathetic feeling that would be in keeping with the environment. I have to confess, the net result of this is that there are 146 units.
So, you're looking at about 30 units cut down from the proposed project. All right. I did, I did, I do agree with the inner traffic counselor that it is kind of dangerous for the public. According to your studies, you're looking at about 1,050 trips a day, so you're looking at about almost 400 trips, 400,000 trips a year. And in five years, you're looking at about 2 million trips. So, I, it's hard to believe that's no accident going to happen. And I would hate to see somebody getting hurt. So, that's why I believe Mr. Samuel's presentation, it's a great idea as a base for us to go. And I think it's much safer for the kids, for the, for the residents, for the fire trucks, for the circulation, for everything else. If someone, you guys should consider probably, or may consider, to go forward with this project so we have basis, so we can start, set conditions for the sewer, for the water. Because like, as of today, or right now, we still don't have a base to work on. So, is this something you, you think, I think it's a great presentation and a good idea what he presented. Do you think it's something you could work with?
Two-part answer. The bottom line is we will try because...
The bottom line is we will try because, you know, as we said from the outset, our job, our mission, in addition to getting a good project approved, is to make you all comfortable. And these are certainly suggestions that are reasonable in good faith. In no way would I think that anything that's been said is crazy. I'm sure that Dom had design reasons that it was designed as we did it, but that doesn't mean that maybe we couldn't adjust, if not completely, in conformity with the suggestion, but to some, you know, significant degree. I just think, you know, that it makes sense, given again that we're waiting for various other things, that we'll look at it, and rather than responses off the cuff, you know, we'll do the best we can. Because again, it's certainly in our interest to, to take these into account and to do as much as we can to satisfy you folks. If we can't, we still have to support and try to make you comfortable on, on what any of our own revised or not revised plans would be. So, you know, unless you have anything further to add, you know, certainly we will, as they say, take it under advisement and do what we can.
Well, that was the reason from previous hearings, that's why I insisted not to go in detail so we don't waste time, fewer time and money and everything else, unless we have a base to work with. I believe this, this is a great base, but Sam, you want to add something else quick? Let him add something quick.
Yeah, please, I forgot to mention that one other thing that we saw that concerned us, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Concerned us. Fire truck access was only from this side, and the buildings are long enough that there's no way to get to the back part of the buildings in this plant. When, when, and by the way, this is very conceptual.
All right, I understand that.
But hopefully the design goes along these concepts. But here, sit near the mic, the, with a fire truck can come in here, we would see large openings here so that in fact, if, if the necessity came, one would be able to get all around the structures.
That's right. Thank you. Charlie, what do you think?
I, I would like to see that explored in a little more detail, and I certainly would be happy to see what they could come up with in terms of information for you that way. One thing that you, Mr. Chairman, had asked me to look at the last time we were here was that Dakota Partners had submitted a list of 10 different, nine different projects that they had previously done, and it had to do with the parking ratio more than anything else. When I researched these, I found that five out of the nine were out of state. So whatever conditions might have applied to that, I'm not sure how we would apply it to what's happening in the Commonwealth. Of those that were left, I'm not sure which of those, and it only retained four, let's see, one was in Haverhill, the one in Barnstable, and there was one in Hanson and one in Yarmouth. I'm not sure which of those four might be 40Bs or whether they were simply standard apartment developments. And it was not possible for me to determine whether there were more than two stories in each of the structures that they had. They were in varying locations, one or two which were very dense, one of them in particular which was in, let's see, Milford, New Hampshire was in a suburban setting, one in New Hampshire was a main, off of a main highway. I know that Barnstable is off of Independence Lane. New Milford, Connecticut was low intensity off a main roadway. The Brookfield, Connecticut one was in open space, with open space was on two sides, highways on the front and rear. Haverhill, Mass was a suburban setting with low density. The Hartford, Connecticut site was in a densely populated area off of a main highway. And I couldn't determine anything about the Hanson site because it didn't have a street number, so I couldn't locate it. The Yarmouth one, when I looked at it on the Google Maps, was still an open site. So I don't know that it really helps too much, but based on the presentation that was made tonight by your transportation professional, it would appear that only one or two of these even approach the parking ratio that he would recommend based on ITE documentary information. So it's, it's a little bit, it doesn't give you the kind of information perhaps that's helpful, other than to know that five out of the nine don't even comply with any state regulations that we could apply.
Sam, roughly, you think you have parking almost two cars a unit if you, we go with your idea?
I have 1.6 cars per unit.
1.6.
There's 1.6 more. In order to... Excuse me. Can I talk loud? Can you hear me, Bob?
We love you, Chris.
Okay. These two rows here are double parked.
Yeah.
This, here, here, this one is single, and I could pick up another 50 cars here if we brought everything down 20 feet. So we could have almost two cars. This plant could have two cars per unit almost.
Okay.
There are, there are 112 cars here, 68 cars here, 50 cars here because of the single loading, but it could be doubled.
Okay. I just want to hear a little bit from the public, Peter, if you don't mind. Okay, who wants to speak? Peter, you want to say anything? And it's getting late, so let's do it quick, please.
Yeah, at this point, I think on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would reserve comment until the next hearing. I think there's more information out there that needs to be heard. As a general comment, I would agree generally with the planning board's concerns regarding the, the internal parking arrangements. I'm not so sure that the Board of Selectmen would buy into that number at this time, but I do know that we share their concern with the safety aspects of where the parking is, where the play areas are, and also some of the issues that the, our transportation consultant has raised as well. But beyond that, I don't have anything specific to say. I think it's appropriate to have the fire district comment. I think it's appropriate to hear more about the sewer negotiations, if you will. I'm particularly curious to know whether there's still a plan to put a holding tank for sewage on the property, or whether that's been, been...
We, we, like I said before, we, we can't, we don't want to waste time.
No.
With details until we have a base. I think what Mr. Samuel came up with the planning board, I think it's a good base if we could have the applicant, if he agrees to our, to this, so we could go out and start doing these conditions and these monitoring wells and holding tanks and everything else. But there's no sense, we're running out of time, August around the corner, and there's no sense of us start making conditions if we don't agree on the base. Do you, do you guys agree, if the applicant agree on the base, is 146 units close for you? Does that sound okay?
I'd, I'd have to go back to the board and ask them that, but it's, I would say it's not a significant enough drop that I would feel comfortable speaking on their entire behalf at this point in time.
I do understand, but we can't have the pie and eat it too, so, and you know how it works.
Yep.
So we have to be, we have to be careful how to, we can choose our fights.
Well, I think, I think too, some of, some of the, some of this is chicken and egg. If you're talking about the impacts to the sewer, I think we need to hear at some point from the sewer superintendent, you know, is 110 units fine to, to build without a holding tank? At what point does he want a holding tank? So these are, these are details that I don't think you can get to a base number without knowing some of that ahead of time.
Well, I, yes, guy, come, come forward.
If it helps, Mr. Chairman, holding tank is off the table. They've agreed to phase this over three to four years, so there's no issue with capacity. The only thing that's concerning us now is the piping and the pump stations, and that's the money's for.
Piping and inside the pipe sta, inside the pump station?
Worried about, there's a couple of issues. One is the impact of what we call baby wipes and rags, so they need to mitigate that. The actual pipe size is 18 inches. We feel that there's no issues, but we want that vetted by an engineering firm to verify that. We want to make sure the pumps can handle the extra flow, and we're basing it upon the 176 units. So, but we do know that the holding tank is off the table simply because it's being phased over, and each phase is going to be paid for to remove INI or create capacity for the next phase. So we said there'd be a holding tank. It was our opinion, if they were going to build all 176 at one time, and we're going to see the total flow, then we want it to be held and discharged at night for the impact. But that's changed.
So you don't think that's a good idea, the holding tanks?
No. Because of the phasing. If the phasing is not going to happen, and the agreement to take the hotel offline immediately, if that's going to happen, then the tank is a, is a dead issue. We have no need for that. We just need to vet the, the rags, the little, the particulars. I know that the planning board has a problem with grinder pumps. We're asking for grinder pumps because it's less impact to us with rags. So there's some things that we would like to see to make it easier for us to handle that product, but generally speaking, we don't see need for holding tank.
Okay.
Okay?
So this is the level of, sort of, information that I'd like to have before I sign on to a number on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. See, I didn't know that until just now.
Right, well, that's why I've been asking for these things for every hearing.
Oh, I know, I know.
I, I, one more clarification of the thing is, but we had just, I guess we agreed to a figure for our engineers to move forward or their engineers. I don't know how that works, but we'd like to get going immediately. We, I guess, whose permission do I need to tell engineers, go for it? And that's, we're not doing anything until we hear if that's a go or not, so.
Given the permission already.
I'm sorry?
You were given the permission already when you, when we received the money.
I haven't seen, so the money's in?
The money just came in today.
Okay, then we'll move forward.
Well, let's, before we go forward, we have, like, we have to have a base. We have to have, to hear from the applicant. I really, I strongly recommend this plan that the planning board suggested. So if we could have the applicant to agree to this, so then we could go forward with you spending their money and them spending their time and everyone's time. So, so thank you for your comment. We're taking consideration. But before he goes forward, I think we should hear from the applicant if they're okay with that, if, so we could go to work.
The impact to the, to the infrastructure and the, and the pump station, we were going to do in the worst-case scenario, the 176 that's on the table. So if you're going to scale it down, it wouldn't hurt, it, it actually would be better.
Right, yeah.
In our study for the worst case, then we definitely would have an answer for the board as to if they were going to do the 176, then what that impact may be to the infrastructure. That's our hang-up. And so if we had the money, I'd like to move forward, and I appreciate what you're saying, but I think if we move forward, worst-case scenario, you scale it back, then we scale back. We already have an existing report that says, yes, this is doable, anything less is going to be doable.
Right, but maybe the applicants don't want to, if they don't agree to this, we, we see we have some conflict.
If they do 110 or 176, we're going to still require an impact study to the infrastructure. So no matter how many units they have, that same study's going to be done.
All right.
So I'm saying we can get the study done and, and expedite towards your August date and have a specific answer for the selectmen, everybody else involved.
All right, very well. So I guess we go forward.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Peter.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, thank you. We agree with that because, you know, they're, they're starting and will continue the study based on the 176. I already said we will review the proposals, and if we can scale back and make adjustments, that's great, but not to be redundant, but we agree, yes, they can go forward because they already said there's capacity. They'll study the pipes, impact on piping or requisites for piping and the pump stations and all of that. And either they'll say it's okay for 176, which means it would obviously be okay for a lower number, or if their analysis says, gee, you actually, you know, should either spend some money on different pump stations or pipes, or cut back the number of units. So it still works for us in terms of the given, taken, in terms of them going forward right away. So we're fine, we appreciate it.
All right. When can we get an answer from your, from your client about this idea, about this conceptual plan?
It's in our interest to try to do that as soon as we can. I can't promise a specific date because Dom is going to take some time to do some careful, you know, analysis, probably want to talk to perhaps the various peer review and the sewer and water folks, you know, along the way. And in terms of whatever that results in as to a reduction in number of units, the company will have to look at it, their financial implications. And again, I'm saying we will do our best because we want to get this approved and appreciate the, you know, the timeframes that you're pushing to get it done expeditiously. That helps us, too. You know, I, the principals will be taking over and having another project manager, so I don't think Jim's absence for a while, as great as he is, I wish he were here, and I wish him the best in recovery. But in any case, I don't think that will slow us down. It's really just being careful in the analysis. In terms of when we think we would have further reports back, I guess it's really just the sewer. I mean, I think we can schedule another hearing relatively quickly. Dom, you know, in terms of how much time you think you might need. I, I would think that in terms of what we would do, though, he wouldn't do any full more, when I say full, the types of preliminary plans that have been reviewed that were sufficient detail for your peer review and everybody else's. I don't think we would do that, even if we believe we can come up with a lower number and a lot of the things that have been suggested, including by the planning board. We would want to put a conceptual plan to come back to you with, and if it seemed to be mutual at that point, then either the more detailed plans could be done, or we'd probably be satisfied with just having it as a typical, typical condition and a comprehensive permit that the final detailed plans be reviewed again with peer review before building permits are issued.
I, but I think if you could come up with a plan that's close to what the Mr. Samuel presented, I see you, ma'am, just give us, give us, ma'am. If you could come up, if next hearing, you could give us an answer that you are okay with this number and with this, and you could come up with a relatively the same concept of Mr. Samuel, so we could, I think, I personally am okay with this.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
So we could go forward with that, so we could start work, really work. Like as of now, we haven't done nothing. So you think you could get us an answer in the next hearing?
Sure, because we're setting the date, so we need to, Dom, I don't know if you have any idea as to what would be a reasonable time for a next hearing, so that we could have, you know, time amongst ourselves as well as probably report to...
But let me, let me tell you something. Next hearing, Mr. Baptiste has a, has a training, he has to be out of state on the 27. But if you could come in and at least let us know that you're okay to go forward with something similar to the, what the planning board suggested, that's all what we need to know.
In two weeks.
Yeah. So you got to discuss with your partners, if you could come up with something like that.
May I take one minute just a... Yeah, let's give it a shot, you know, two weeks.
So you'll discuss with these partners, and you come back to us and say...
And a conceptual plan, again, a conceptual plan and...
Excuse me, can you be quiet, please?
We'll see what can be done, you know, along that line in two weeks. So yeah, absolutely.
All right. Now we, we just go to the public now. Who wants to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just with respect to what Mr. Freeman just said.
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect out of the engineer to come up with, you know, even the location of drainage structures or anything like that at this point, until you've verified what that number is going to be.
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
Enough of a change in what Mr. Daskalakis has shown you, that the old plan is not going to be worth anything.
Right.
So if they want to look at the plan in terms of a very general analysis to say, yeah, this is, this is doable, something we can work with, at this point, that's all you, I believe you all, you need to know until the number is verified. Once it is, then you can put them to work with coming up with a plan that has similar details to the one that we've already seen.
That's what I'm saying. If they agree to this number, so we tell...
So in terms of, in terms of what you hear the next time, I don't think it's essential for them to begin even a concept plan other than the number, and that looks something like Mr. Daskalakis has shown you tonight.
Right. That's what we want them to, just come in for five minutes, next hearing, tell us, this looks good for us, we work sounds similar with the, the numbers of units good, so we'd give them okay so that they could go to work.
Right.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to make some...
Your name for the record.
...few comments. Lucille Dodson. First of all, I didn't see or hear anything about what about with the parking, any like areas for like visitor parking, not just for the residents, but visitor parking. We all know people get visitors at their homes, so I think that needs to be addressed. And also because of that, I do think that the plan that was showed today is better, but I still think that number needs to be reduced. And you had asked and requested them before we met again tonight that they would come up with a number, which they haven't. And I remember you specifically asked them that question, and they had said before that they could work and still be financially, you know, and profitable if they came up with, I think it was like 106 or 104, something like that, I remember the number being.
They said that?
Yes.
I don't, I don't believe they did.
And so I'm just saying, is that still at 146 or whatever the number is that... And so I'm just saying is that still at 146 or whatever the number is that presented tonight still needs to be reduced. A few things that I also want to mention here that I wrote down is due for the safety of the, um, the wells because of this, where this is proposed, and there's a lot of woods behind there. That's going to be very enticing to kids, teenagers, whoever, to go through there. So I propose that one of the restrictions that you put on this project is to put a six, no less than a six-foot fence on the back, all sides, no access of any gates for anybody to get through, um, to go around. That should be a condition, absolutely.
That makes sense, okay.
And the other thing I want to say is just remember, a community building built on this site is not a YMCA, and that's another reason why this number needs to be reduced. Because they're, what are these kids, I mean, there's Cranberry Highway. Where are they going to go? What are they going to have to do? They're going to get mischievous and in trouble because they're going to be bored and there's nothing to do. They can't even ride a bike. So again, this all needs to be really, really thoroughly thought of, and, you know, think of your own families when your kids were young, and you, if you had a decent, um, backyard or a neighbor's street to ride a bike, that's one thing. But these kids, you know, if you have this 146, um, units, they're going to be crammed in there, doing what? So that really needs to be thought of, very, very, very in-depth. Um, another thing is we need to be proactive, not reactive, when, um, if you remember with Brandy Hill, how many years of trouble, constant, 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 constant trouble? And what they had to do to reduce that trouble is they put a gated community there with a manned gate. And I request that that's one of the considerations that you put with this, is that you have it be a manned gated community that, with an entrance, so that it's more, you know, keeping trouble out per se, instead of, you know, illicit activities going on there. And these are just things that I think that everybody should really consider when you're going through the details of this. Um, and those are basically the major points that I have.
To speak on the Brandy Hill thing, that hasn't stopped anything.
Well, you know what? Sometimes just the idea of it does.
Well, they, they, the biggest problems we have, they're coming through the mind at school.
But the thing is, you know what? I don't hear it or I see it in the paper like I used to, so I think it has reduced some. So I do think that it's a help instead of a hindrance. Thank you.
Wilkins, sir, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Gentlemen. My name is, um, Richard J. Hadley, and, uh, currently I am the, um, personal representative of the estate of, um, Michael Allen Hadley, and that estate includes the property at 3104 Cranberry Highway. And, um, soon I will become the sole owner of that property. And I'd like to, um, I'd like to just speak about, about one thing, and that is the, that is the traffic at the intersection of Cranberry Highway and Red Brook Road. And I'd like to just simplify it by, by speaking only of the westbound traffic on Cranberry Highway and the westbound traffic on, uh, Red Brook Road. I've heard others at these, uh, other meetings talk about themselves and they say, uh, they're not a traffic engineer. I'm not a traffic engineer, but my family has owned that property for, since 1927.
Okay.
And I've been, I've been, uh, visiting my property. I'm 69 years old and I've been visiting my property for that long. And my driveway is right at that intersection. So although I'm not a traffic engineer, I have a pretty good idea of what goes on at that intersection. And right now, that intersection is controlled by a yield sign, only a yield sign. So the traffic coming west on Red Brook Road and west on Cranberry Highway is only controlled, the, the, the traffic that's trying to get on, on Cranberry Highway, uh, heading west on, on, uh, Red Brook Road is only controlled by a, a yield sign. That means that there is like a, I would say a, um, a kind of a, a semi-free flow of traffic at that intersection going westbound.
All right, well, how, so what's your concern for your property?
I'll get to it. I mean, I get to it. I'm just trying to, just do it by the numbers, because I've heard a lot of talk from, from a lot of people in all these meetings, and I haven't heard specifically what, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to explain, okay? So there is a free flow of traffic going, heading westbound on, on Red Brook Road. That, that means that it's a semi-free flow of traffic, uh, that means that there's no backup, really, if ever, there is, is, there is no backup on Red Brook Road, uh, eastward in that, in that nearby community.
Right.
Okay? Now, I've been informed by the, uh, an organization dealing with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation that, that that, that intersection is going to change. It's been, it's been discussed here, okay? Because they proposed to take a portion of my property, which I am opposed to, I've had to look into this, uh, this, this intersection change a little bit more, okay? So instead of that, instead of that yield sign, there's going to be a, a traffic light there, okay?
That's what they proposed, yeah.
That means that, that, that's, that, that semi-free flow of traffic on, from, from Red Brook Road onto, onto Cranberry Highway is going to be interrupted. It's not, it's not going to happen anymore. In my opinion, after, after viewing this, this intersection for 69 years or so, uh, I believe there is a good chance, just by, by the, what the Department of Transportation is going to do, I believe that there's a good chance that there's going to be times when there is heavy traffic on Red Brook Road that's going to cause a backup back towards the, the, the nearby community. I'm not going to sit here and say that that's going to happen, but we've all seen when there's excessive traffic on very busy days, we've all seen that when there's a stop, how quickly traffic can back up. Okay? That's just with the Department of Transportation, uh, change that's going to be made. Now comes this project, okay? Now this project, that's going to increase the westbound traffic on Red Brook Road to get into the project. It's also going to increase the, the, the traffic coming out of this project to go westbound on Red Brook Road. In other words, that, that driveway that this gentleman spoke of, uh, a, 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 a full axis driveway from this, this project onto Red Brook Road is going to increase the pressure at those lights, okay? So that, that's going to increase the possibility, just the possibility, I don't know for sure, of traffic, on heavy traffic days, of traffic backing up it, uh, down eastward on Red Brook Road into that community. I happen to believe, I just, I just, I, I have a sense that if this, if the Department of Transportation thing goes through and this project goes through, I think, I, I, I just have a sense that there are going to be times on very heavy traffic days on Red Brook Road where the traffic is going to back up into the nearby community and that there's going to be trouble, there's going to be difficulty with people coming out of the side streets and even coming out of their driveways to get on Red Brook Road to head west. Okay? And I haven't heard, I haven't, I've, I've heard, you know, that now we have a traffic engineer here. I've read this study, I've read the study very carefully, and I don't, they, they paint a rosy picture, but I'm not, I just have a sense that there's going to be, I think on heavy traffic days, there's going to be a lot of difficulty in that community that's just east of, of this intersection.
There's no question ask on holidays, Memorial Day, Labor Day, 1st of July, maybe sometimes in Christmas, you're going to have backup traffic.
There's going to, no, no question. That's, that's exactly my point.
I do, I really, I do understand this, however, these, these kind of permits that they applied for, which I explained before to the, to everyone here, these kind of permits, like, they're the kind, like, you can't have the pie and eat it. So in other word, either you got to work with the applicant or you got to go to the housing court and you're going to lose. We're going to lose, from my experience for that. So, so we can't just deny the project because we want to. I wish it, it is this way. So, uh, I know it's going to be traffic, I know it's going to back up in holidays, so that's why we're trying to do, to suggest to the applicant to reduce these numbers and build it the way Mr. Samuel from the planning board suggested. It is still a lot of unit, it's still a lot of traffic, still a lot of kids, still all this. We do, we all agree on that, but unfortunately, it doesn't take us anywhere. That's the problem.
You, you mean to say, you know, I've, I've heard this argument by you before.
Right.
And I'm just, I'm pointing out.
What I'm trying to tell you, if we deny it and they go to housing.
Okay.
It's not going away. This is what I'm trying to tell you, and the town will spend hundreds of thousands of legal fees.
Okay. So, so, so in, in a sense, you're, you're kind of throwing in the towel in, in allowing a serious, a, a, a very significant, a possible very significant problem to happen down the street because you can't do what?
I, no, we can't. Unfortunately, we can't.
I'm just, I'm, okay.
I wish we can, believe me.
Fine, fine. If you don't mind, you use the word allowing, okay? And, and that's, it's a key word, allowing. We do not have the power to not allow this.
Do you understand? We do have the power, but we'll end up, we'll lose.
This, this project has already gone in front of the state of Massachusetts into entities that have authority over this town and over this board, and it's already been approved. This is already, this has been approved by powers beyond our ability to, to say no. So if we say no, all the applicant has to do is appeal our no, and then we have no say, and then they can do whatever they want. Well. So right now, we're trying to limit what they do and mitigate it and listen to your problem about the traffic. Yes, we know that it's going to be, there's going to be more cars at that intersection. So how are we going to deal with them? Not, we can't stop the cars from being there. It's just not going to happen. Just, that's what we want people to understand. If we just say, "Application denied," the applicant says, "Ah, thank you, thank you." Just like Brer Rabbit, "Don't throw me in the briar prats, mister." You say no, you're in the briar prats, and Brer Rabbit's a happy camper. That applicant's going to go right to the state and they're going to say, "They denied us, we appealed their denial," and the state's going to say, "Granted, go build whatever you want."
I understand the concern for traffic. We have a traffic problem. When 25 backs up, all right, these apps on the phone are telling them where to go. So they're shooting all down, head of the bay. That's going to stop that traffic because they're going to have the same tie-up. They're going to have more lights on Cranberry Highway, they're going to have bigger problem. So I think it's going to eliminate some of that traffic. So as we said, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to eliminate traffic. It's going to eliminate some of it that's, that's cutting through there to Borndale Road. We're still going to have traffic.
It's frustrating for us as well, sir.
Believe me, I wish.
I see your frustration, but you have to understand.
It doesn't work that way, unfortunately.
We have, we have a petition here with hundreds, hundreds of names on it saying, "Just say no."
All right. Thank you. It is getting late. I'm, I just, one minute, one minute coming. Go ahead, ma'am, in the back, let her go first. Just one minute. We go, we got to close the hearing at 10 o'clock. It's getting late.
Hi, Debbie Edo, 41 Monac. I just want to reiterate as well, as far as the traffic goes, there is a natural flow of traffic, and it is going to increase it a lot. And I'm, I'm a little troubled because with, everyone's concerned with the traffic and the flow of traffic within, within, but we're going to be affected horribly too. So I don't understand why there isn't, and I know, I know you can't deny the 40B, but I'm scared, I'm afraid because you're talking 146. I don't want 146. I want as low as possible because 146 units is still too many, it's still too many people, that congestion at that intersection when you live it every day, it's not on a piece of paper, it's in your life. You're fighting to get to work, you're fighting to go to the store, you're fighting for everything you do sometimes in that neighborhood because of the traffic, sometimes on a regular day, not just always a busy holiday. So I would just like to really stress the fact that any kind of traffic and any kind of lessening of the amount of units that go in there would be really, really appreciated by the residents, and we'll get more signatures, we'll do anything, and I know it's not going to help, I know you can't deny it.
I know, but let me just make something clear. We said 146, they didn't agree to it. So they might come back and say, "We don't want to."
And with the, with the natural flow of traffic, the state was in, you know, I'm not, I understand your concern about traffic, I deal with traffic, but the, the natural flow of traffic was ended anyway when the state.
I understand that, and that's, I get that. And between that, and now this, it's like, it's crazy there. Sometimes it is, we're landlocked, we cannot get out of the driveways or the roads.
All right, that's with the natural flow.
That's on a holiday weekend, without the backup of a light. It's just going to be.
All right, thank you. All right, so Mr. Freeman, so we'll wait to hear from you if that's, that's a good, if this is, this, uh, what the planning board presented is a good idea or not, so we could get, really get, start to get to work.
Know what, what our task is between now and, uh, two weeks from now. Thank you, appreciate it.
So, thank you very much. All right, uh.
I make a motion that we close this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, thank you.